...three distinct counties. Be it therefore enacted by the Governor, Council, and Burgesses of this present General Assembly, it is hereby enacted by the authority of the same that from and after the fifteenth day of the May next, the said county of Frederick shall be divided into three distinct counties in the following manner. That is to say, on the north by a line beginning in the line that divides the counties of Frederick and Loudon, one mile and a half northward of the corner in Williams Gap that at present divides the parishes of Frederick and Norbord, hence westward with a line exactly parallel to the line that now divides the said parishes of Frederick and Norbord till it intersects the line of Hampshire County, then the Hampshire Line to the corner dividing the parishes of Frederick and Beckford, thence with the lines dividing the said parishes of Frederick and Beckford east-southeast to the southeastern bank of Cedar Creek, thence binding on the same to its confluence with the river Shenandoah, thence across the said river east to the easterly bank of the same, thence down the said river and binding on the same in the mouth of Passage Creek, and thence with the right line to the line of Culpeper at the intersection of the road leading through Chester's Gap, thence with the Culpeper, Fort Kear, and Loudon lines to the beginning and all that part of the county within the said boundaries shall be one distinct county and retain the name of Frederick. And all that part of the county which lies between the first mentioned line running from the said beginning in the line of Loudon County and the Poughkeepsie River shall be one other distinct county and be known by the name of Berkeley. And all the remainder of the said county shall be one other distinct county and be known by the name of Dunmore, which is now Shenandoah County. So, directed by the Act creating Berkeley County to convene on the third Tuesday of every month, the Court of Berkeley County first convened on May 19th, 1772, at what became known as the Red House. The following is taken from the first minutes of the proceedings of the court. Berkeley County, do you remember that at the house of Edward Beeson on the nineteenth day of May, 1772, a commission of the peace and a commission of orier and terminer from His Excellency Lord Dunmore dated the seventeenth day of April in the year aforesaid, directed to Ralph Wormley, Jacob Hite, Van Swerington, Thomas Rutherford, Adam Stephen, John Neville, Thomas Swerengen, Samuel Washington, James Norris, William Little, Robert Stephen, John Briscoe, Hugh Lyle, James Strode, William Morgan, Robert Stodgden, James Seton, Robert Carter Willis, and Thomas Robinson, and also a dedamus for administering the oath directed to the same persons or any two of them were produced in red, whereupon the said Van Swerengen, having first taken the usual oath to His Majesty's person in government, repeated and subscribed the test, taken the oath of a justice of the peace, of a justice of the peace of the county court and chancery, and of a justice of orier and terminer, which were administered to him by the said James Norris and William Little, he, the said Van Swerengen, then administered the same oaths upon Thomas Swerengen, Samuel Washington, James Norris, William Morgan, William Little, James Strode, Robert Stephen, Robert Stodgden, Robert Carter Willis, and James Seton, who severally took the same and repeated and subscribed the test, court proclaimed. Berkeley County was there.
Thank you, Edward. All right. You ready to start us off with remarks from Senator Capito? All right. We're up on the screen. We have Senator Capito. Good morning.
No, she's not recording.
Oh, recorded. Well, man, I tell you, still good morning, right?
Well, my question is, is Berkeley County, in Berkeley, Jefferson, and now we know Berkeley County is in on itself, the county council is going to be having a celebration, or they're going to unveil a new county seal. I've always loved visiting Berkeley County because of its history, and sometimes just being able to get to doing parts of the processes in the number of county. So I say congratulations to Berkeley County. I know that there have been some duck races, and that somebody has to go and do it. And I just want to say congratulations to Berkeley County, who are bringing a celebration to 250 years of winning the college.
All right. Thanks to Senator Capito. Do we have anything from Senator Manchin here?
Yes.
Okay. Councilperson Gokenaire.
Can I wear my hat?
No, sir.
Greetings from Joe Manchin, U.S. United States Senator. On behalf of the citizens of the Mountain State, and as your United States Senator, it is my distinct honor to extend greetings to everyone celebrating the 250th commemoration of the inaugural meeting of the County Court of Berkeley County and the unveiling of the beautiful new Berkeley County Seal. Our history is a large part of what makes West Virginia stand out from the rest of the country. The momentous occasion we celebrate today is an important accomplishment for Berkeley County and our entire state. Since the days of our pioneering forefathers, Berkeley County has always boasted a unique, fascinating past. From the Revolutionary War to the Civil War, this county has been a pivotal player in moving our state and our nation forward. I wholly appreciate the Berkeley County 250th Commemorative Steering Committee and the Berkeley County Council for preserving, protecting, and defending our rich and treasured history. Moreover, I congratulate Thea Clutter for designing this spectacular new seal we celebrate today. Our future depends on how well we commemorate our past to that end. I know we're all in good hands with Thea. Again, congratulations to Berkeley County on its 250th anniversary, best wishes on the next 250 years. I know they will be exciting and bright as the last 250. Please enjoy the festivities celebrating this historic occasion. May God bless you, may God bless Berkeley County, and may God continue to bless the great state of West Virginia. Senator Joe Manchin.
Congressman Mooney, anyone here for Congressman Mooney? Okay. Randall Reed Smith, on behalf of the Governor. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Randall Reed Smith, and I am always proud to sit on the Governor's Cabinet as his curator for the West Virginia Department of Arts, Culture, and History, and what a great historic day we are having today. Proclamation by Governor Jim Justice. Whereas the Court of Berkeley County convened for the first time on this very date, 250 years ago, at the home of Edward Beeson, and whereas the founding fathers of Berkeley County included the likes of General Adam Stephen, Captain James Strode, and Samuel Washington, and whereas Berkeley County has long been a place where truly special history is made from the patriotic heroics of the Berkeley Rifleman in the Beeline March of 1775 to the landmark economic achievements of today, and whereas on this day, the leaders and citizenry of Berkeley County have good cause to celebrate the community's rich and colorful heritage. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Jim Justice, Governor of the great state of West Virginia, do hereby recognize and proclaim the year 2022 as the 250th anniversary of Berkeley County in the Mountain State, and encourage all citizens to join me in this observance to congratulate Berkeley County for its many historic milestones and extend best wishes for success in the years to come, in witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and cause the great seal of the state of West Virginia to be affixed, done at the Capitol, City of Charleston, State of West Virginia, this eighteenth day of May in the year of our Lord, 2022, and in the 159th year of the state. Signed, Jim Justice, Governor. And I would be remiss if I didn't send you all greetings from one of your very own, Berkeley Bentley, who is our Governor at the Governor's Office, and he is from Martinsburg. Thank you all for letting me be here. This is great.
Thank you, sir.
All right. I see we have someone from the Secretary of State's office as well, Mac Warner. Any comments from Mac or not?
Just congratulations on 250 years. He wishes he could be here today, but I'm happy to be here.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else from the state offices? All right. Want to also recognize all of our county commissioners that have sat up here and done their job very well, and a lot of hard work and dedication. I'll start with Tony Petrucci, Ron Collins, Bill Stubblefield, Wayne Donham, Pat Murphy, Elaine Moch. Did I miss anybody? Okay. Any of y'all? We also have a comment from another prior county commissioner, Howard Strauss, and I'll read what he had to say. "I wish I would have been there. If there is another time during the year to see each other, I would like to come. Few people know how hard they work," meaning all of y'all, "and as a small guy, I really appreciate the work and dedication they do over the time and now." So that came from Howard Strauss. He's out of town, but is there any other prior commissioners that would like to have say something this time? Don't be bashful. I've never known any of y'all to be bashful. Ms. Moch, you brought some things to show. Could you take time to do that?
Mr. Barnhart, before he was going to do this, he came and he asked me, he said he didn't know if we had the minutes, and here we have, right here, the original 1772. This is from 1778. So with gloves, you may look at it.
Thank you.
With me standing over it. On the other hand, the documents I have here, Lord Dunmore did these on the 12th of April when he did all of these, and these are the different orders that he wrote concerning Berkeley County, and there's his famous seal right there, and these are all from April of 1772, which gave him so many dates. And then the first act by William Drew, who became the first Berkeley County clerk. Here's the minutes from that act, William Drew. And last but not least, they did not have a planning commission, but we have a diagram of the square and where things were supposed to be in 1772, and it's the original. All this stuff is original. It's under lock and key, kept at the courthouse.
Good. Thank you for bringing those. All right. The, I'd like to take time out and to recognize Matt Olmstead. Most of y'all know Matt. He didn't, wasn't expecting this, and I'm gonna probably embarrass him a little bit, but Matt's put a lot, a lot of time into the celebration of the 250th birthday of Berkeley County. And I know last weekend, he was out Saturday and Sunday, had the duck race, which was fun, and has pulled all the historical community together as one. And Matt, if you don't know, Matt is very dedicated to his work. It doesn't matter what he's doing, and we're just fortunate to have him as part of the team, and he brings a lot of good things to the county council and to the citizens of Berkeley County. So Matt, thank you for everything you've done. One of the things, if you don't, Matt's got a whole lineup of events. Please make sure that you take part on a celebration on July 3rd at the airport. It's not only going to be a very nicely planned 250th on July 3rd, but it also is going to bring a lot of recognition to our airport. That's doing very well, and so I'm glad that's a lot of planning on that. I know Nick Deal has a lot of plans, and hopefully it's going to be a successful day. So if there's, I'll open it up to the setting County Council now. Edward, you have anything else to say or?
Matt just suggested I wear the hat, but it didn't work. I went whole, whole. Thank you, Matt.
Dan?
What a, what a, what a great time here in Berkeley County for Berkeley County to be where it is today. I can't imagine what the thought process was 250 years ago, but I would-
Let me tell you.
But I'm sure they would be very proud of where we are today, as well as being amazed. I would like to mention that the fireworks that is happening out to the airport is, we did partner with the city to make that happen.
Yep. Yep. All right. Councilperson Whitaker.
Yes, sir. Again, it's a great day here to be a Berkeley Countyan, and many thanks to everyone who has partake in any festivities that here in the county that for celebrating our 250th birthday, all of our past commissioners, all the present ones. It has been my honor to serve here and for the citizens of Berkeley County. Happy birthday, Berkeley.
Councilperson Gokenaire.
Yes, sir. It's, it makes my heart happy to look out and see you here today, because normally there's only a couple people here, but this is how this is, this is how this needs to work. You know, you need community involvement, and that's what makes it great, you know, to be able to look out and see the former leadership of this county sitting in the audience is really important to us, and thank you for taking the time to come here today. You know, representatives from the state, representatives from the Senator Capito and Manchin's office, you know, what a, what a great place to be. You know, I know we have our challenges, and you know, we're working on those challenges, but this county is a great place to live, it's a great place to raise your family, and you know, we all have a choice. We can move, but I'm not. I love it here. I like the people here. You know, they're great people. So thank you. 250th birthday celebration. I love birthdays, other than my own. Actually, I do like mine. I love singing happy birthday, especially to my grandchildren, but thank you all for coming.
As everyone said, today is a special day for Berkeley County, and it's made possible by each and every one of y'all in the room, elected officials, or if you're here as a citizen of Berkeley County, because it takes the team, and the team is everyone that's here. And I know we have a very strong team here in Berkeley County. I appreciate it, and I'm like Mr. Gokenaire and everyone else up here and in the room. There's no place else that I'd rather be than Berkeley County. It's been my home for my families and prior to us becoming a state, and so I thank y'all for being here. I think, thank you for choosing Berkeley County. And at this time, I guess we'll unveil the new county seal. So which one is it? Which one? Huh? Okay. All right. Y'all wanna?
Examine.
Members ready to roll?
Yeah.
Hold on, Jim.
There you go.
Go shoot your crowd. All right. There they are. And Matt, if I'm correct, we've never had a seal.
Yeah, that's-
This project started back the last year, and we researched quite extensively looking for a seal in the record, some indication that there was an official county seal, and there was no real confirmation of any seal in the record. There was a celebration seal that was used more recently in the decor of the buildings here on the new campus. That celebration seal was made in 1972 for the 200th anniversary of the county, but no, this is our official county seal as of today. Well, not as of today, as of last, as of last fall, when we officially adopted the design, but this is the rendering for the courtroom.
Very nice. Thank you, Matt. All right. At this time, we'll take a quick break for anyone to mingle a little bit, and then we'll get down to business. Take your picture. Thanks for being here.
Nobody want to talk about business?
All right. We're back from our short recess and break. What we'll do is take items from the public right now. I know Randall Reed Smith, you have a presentation for us, so if you would, I'm sorry you lost all your crowd.
Well, that's okay. I just came to see you.
Okay, that's perfect.
Well, and Matthew has a presentation. You want to do that first and then I'll tell you.
Yeah.
Explain to the, your county council what you're doing.
As part of the commemoration and recording the history of the commemoration, we're presenting a challenge coin and a pen to curator for the state museum.
But more importantly...
And also asking Mr. Reed Smith to be the, well, we'll get back to the carrier, to present a pen and a challenge coin to the governor.
Great.
And so we just want to make sure it be stated in that public way appreciation of governor's support for commemoration activities.
All right.
On behalf of the chair committee, thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. If I may.
Absolutely.
It's always great to be here. I'm working with Matt and H.D. Boyd on a couple of projects up here. And so this, while I'm here the next three days, we're going to go do something for the roundhouse, maybe with the roundhouse authority, but Matt's put together, as you know, a commission for the museum.
Yes.
Yesterday, we had a meeting of the cultural facilities grant. West Virginia is one of 13 states that has a cultural facilities grant, and since you're in construction, it's a brick and mortar grant. We can build things with it. And they applied for a grant, like, within a month. I mean, they got their grant together, and we had 13 grants, we had a million dollars in requests, we were only allowed to give away $600,000, and they approved $70,000. Because I can't believe you didn't try to get in my pockets when I first got here, because you're always asking me for money.
Hey, you know, we'll do whatever we need to do.
Okay, but here's the most important thing you need to know about this grant and the commission. Once they start funding a project, they like to fund it continuously to make sure that it is completed.
Right.
So, and so the panel approved it. It now goes to the Commission of the Arts, which is June 2nd, and then it goes to the governor's office for approval, and we've already talked with the governor's office, so.
Good.
And it comes in the next fiscal year, which is July 1st.
Well, the, just to bring you up to speed, we just took an RFP on the demolition of the 126 building, which is to the left of the proposed museum site.
Yes, and you're going to get rid of the drive-through?
It got awarded.
You think I don't know my job, do you?
Huh?
You think I don't know my job, right?
I know, I know. Well, I just want to keep you informed, right? So, we have architecture stuff that's ready to design it, and Mr. Davis will be talking later today about allocations.
It's an exciting project. Now, I have to tell you one thing about this grant.
Okay.
It is a one-to-one match. That means you've got to put $70,000 with it, so you can tell the commission you'll just have $140,000 to help on that project.
Right.
Oh, and at 10:30, 10 o'clock, what time are we meeting Saturday? 9:00 is the roundhouse authority. We meet with the roundhouse authority at 9:00, and I'm so excited about that, because, you know, I'm in my 17th year, and this is finally movement on what is truly a very historic site. And then we're meeting at 10:30 with the, oh, 10:00 with the commission. My staff is over at the National Arts Conference in DC, so we plan to come here so they can see it. The person who runs this grant program will be here to advise, and I'm just really grateful for your all's support of your heritage, your history. I always say, yes, you're an hour and 15 minutes, an hour and a half from DC, but your history is what we need to celebrate, and it's very significant to the country. And so I thank you all for investing in the past, which helps us continue to build the future.
Now, just so I can dig into your pocket a little bit, Randall, you know, you...
You leave July 1st, right?
I don't want to let you down, but you'll hear later...
Oh, December. Oh, you've got six more months.
You'll hear, you'll hear later today that Mr. Davis is proposing, from our recommendation, of putting some money aside on that, on the museum, right? And, and we understand when you ask us to match dollar for dollar, that it's putting skin in the game. So I just want to ask you, is the state wanting to match us dollar for dollar for this museum?
I will take your message to the governor's office.
(laughing).
You've got a big chunk of my grant money right there, so be happy.
But it's a, it's a regional museum.
Well, here's what, I love this idea. We had a great meeting about six weeks ago, and I told Matt I'd come up every six weeks so that we could help, but I'm really excited that my staff is going to be here, because, you know, I was just a singer. I mean, what do I know? They're the ones that are the experts, so...
I don't want to disappoint you, you know? I got to always pick on you, and you're going to pick on me, so...
I never pick on you, I just help you.
You do.
My job is to make you look great, and that is way above my pay grade.
I was going to say, that's a big job, right there.
I was going to say, do you have time to do anything else?
Lord have mercy, no, I work eight days a week already.
Uh-uh. All right, well, I know that, I know, I was just talking about the museum last night, and, and so I'll make sure that word gets out to the gentleman I was talking to last night, and they know we're well under, on our way.
Honestly and sincerely, I appreciate the investment that you all put in your county. It's so important to the state of West Virginia, and I appreciate you leading the way. I really do.
Thank you.
Thank you guys, each one of you. If you need anything, you've got my cellphone, give me a call.
I do.
I'm only five hours away. Bye.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for making the trip.
Oh, it's my pleasure.
Yep, anyone else? Mr. Combs?
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on my remarks last week about Route 9 and also about unfunded liability issue that Berkeley County and the other counties have been facing. As you well know, recently Berkeley County formally voted to endorse the issue of improvements to Route 9 between Martinsburg and Berkeley Springs. The engineering work is ongoing to finish up the different options and the choice on that, on the improvements. However, funding for these, these improvements is going to be a big and expensive issue. So my first suggestion is that the Berkeley County Council put on its agenda, an action item, and regarding Route 9 funding, a request to West Virginia's elected federal representative, Apatow, Manchin, and Mooney, the Berkeley County state legislators, which we're fortunate that we have the finance chairman from the West Virginia House of Delegates and the Senate President, both in Berkeley County, and also the governor. Anything to help goose this along, I think, would be helpful. When regarding to the unfunded liability, one of the issues that I've been concerned about for quite a while is the regional jails, which actually are state agencies that the county and all the counties have to put in their share on that, and that's a, and that's a liability that the county shouldn't have to do. So I'm also asking for an action item to be on the agenda for the Berkeley, Berkeley County Council that state, particularly since there's going to be some changes in tax, tax policy, that state funding of the county regional jails be implemented 100% with, with a copy of this, this position to Governor Justice, Berkeley County State Legislators, and also the West Virginia Association of Counties. I think both of these issues are ones that we really need and I'd like to see Berkeley County going on record on these, and your statements along with all the others. Thank you very much.
Thank you. One of the things I talked to Dave Kramer about a couple of weeks ago when he was in town was, and I know this is in your area, but Winchester and Frederick County done a wonderful job about 30 years ago doing Route 37 bypass around the west side of Winchester. However, Berkeley County could use something like that on the east side, going from Inwood down to Spring Mills, which will still allow all the traffic that wants to come into Berkeley County or into Martinsburg still get here by on-ramps and off-ramps, but allow people that want to go from the, from the north end to the south end to go around the bypass instead of congestion 81 as much as it is today.
Right.
It's a wonderful idea, and, and the crazy thing is that if they're going to do it, they got to do it sooner than later, because the, it's only going to get more and more expensive every year goes by. I mean, tremendously more expensive.
The growth is continuing, whether or not we do something about it. So something needs to be done, that, and also the bypass around Hickory Street.
Well, yeah, and they were talking, you know, they were talking, you know, hey, why don't we do Novak Drive? Well, Novak Drive is just a Band-Aid. It only takes Route 9, but if you do a whole bypass on the east side...
Right.
That takes care of everything.
It does.
It takes care of 51, it takes care of Novak, it takes care of Route 9, it takes care of 45, it gathers them all, and it'd be so much safer for the residents of Berkeley County.
It, it does, and the congestion's getting to be more and more of a problem, and with the growth we have, something has to be done, but it's expensive, and that's why I'm proposing the county go on record and push everybody along to get this funding, because it's going to be a huge pressure.
I tell them all the time, Berkeley County could use a billion dollars, it would be for infrastructure needs...
And it still wouldn't be enough.
Right here, today.
Yep.
So, all right.
Thank you.
This man? Just state your name for the record, please.
Stephanie Phillips.
Okay.
Daughter of Luther W. Phillips. Morning, everyone. I'm really grateful that I came today. I wasn't actually planning on it. I think the new seal is very nice. Compliments to the artists and the people that approved it. You know, there's another sign that I've noticed recently in Berkeley County, that's the one on Route 9 that says "to support our law enforcement," and I think that is a really good sign. I'm getting ready to head south here pretty soon and take care of some of my family business, which is also in Appalachia, and that's one of the reasons why I really like that sign. I think it's really reflective of Appalachia. My family's ancestry is about to come out public with or without my help, and this year would be my father's 100th birthday. And I explained he helped direct me to your community, and I chose to live in this community. Our family farm, which I am responsible for, on September 12, 2001, I was sitting with the Justice Department while the federal government was trying to eminent domain the mountaintop for the Appalachian Trail Project. Really, their intention was they wanted the water, and, you know, I stocked up the provision...
For approval and we've already talked with the governor's office, so.
Good.
And it comes in the next fiscal year, which is July 1st.
Well, the, uh, just to bring you up to speed, we just, uh, took an RFP on the demolition of the 126 building, which is to the left of the proposed museum site.
And you're going to get rid of the drive-through?
It got awarded.
You think I don't know my job, do you?
Huh?
You think I don't know my job, right?
I know, I know. Well, I just want to keep you informed, right? So, uh, um, we've, we have, uh, architecture stuff that's ready to design it and Mr. Davis will be talking, uh, later today about allocations.
It's an exciting project. Now, I have to tell you one thing about this grant.
Okay.
It is a one-to-one match. That means you've got to put $70,000 with it. So you can tell the commission, you'll just have $140,000 to help on that project.
Right.
Oh, and at, uh, 10:30, 10 o'clock, what time are we meeting Saturday? 9 o'clock is the roundhouse authority. We meet with the roundhouse authority at 9:00, and I'm so excited about that because, you know, I'm in my 17th year and this is finally movement on what is truly a very historic site. And then we're meeting at 10:30 with the, oh, 10:00 with the commission. My staff, uh, is over at the National Arts Conference in DC, so we can, plan to come here so they can see it. Uh, the person who runs this grant program will be here to advise. And I'm just really grateful for your all's support of your heritage, your history. I always say, yes, you're an hour and 15 minutes, an hour and a half from DC, but your history is what we need to celebrate and it's very significant to the country. And so I thank you all for investing in the past, which helps us continue to build the future.
Now, just so I can dig into your pocket a little bit, Randall, you know, you.
You leave July 1st, right?
But, uh, you'll, you'll hear later.
Oh, December. Oh, you've got six more months.
You'll hear, you'll hear later today that, um, Mr. Davis and, uh, is proposing, uh, from our recommendation, uh, putting some money aside on that, um, on the museum, right? And, uh, and we understand when you ask us to match dollar for dollar, that it's putting skin in the game. So I just want to ask you, is the state wanting to match us dollar for dollar for this museum?
I will take your message to the governor's office. You got a big chunk of my grant money right there, so be happy.
But it's a, it's a regional museum.
Well, here's what, I, I love this idea. We had a great meeting about six weeks ago and I told Matt I'd come up every six weeks so that we could help, but I'm really excited that my staff is going to be here because, you know, I, I was just a singer. I mean, what do I know? They're, they're the ones that are the experts, so.
I don't want to disappoint you, you know? I gotta always pick on you and you're gonna pick on me, so.
I never pick on you, I just help you.
Uh, you do.
My job is to make you look great and that is way above my pay grade.
I was gonna say, that's a big job, right there.
I was gonna say, do you have time to do anything else?
Lord have mercy, no, I work eight days a week already.
Uh-uh. All right, well, I know that, I know, I was just talking about the museum last night and, um, and, uh, so I'll make sure that, uh, word gets out to the gentleman I was talking to last night and they know we're well under, on, on our way.
Honestly and sincerely, I appreciate the investment that you all put in your county. It's so important to the state of West Virginia and I appreciate you leading the way. I really do. Thank you guys, each one of you. If you need anything, you got my cell phone, give me a call.
I do.
I'm only five hours away. Bye.
Well, thank you. Thanks for making the trip.
Oh, it's my pleasure.
Yep. Anyone else? Mr. Combs?
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on my remarks last week about Route 9 and also about its unfunded liability issue that Berkeley County and the other counties have been facing. As you well know, uh, recently Berkeley County, uh, formally, uh, voted to endorse the issue of improvements to Route 9 between Martinsburg and Berkeley Springs. Uh, the engineering work is ongoing to finish up the different options and the choice on that, on the improvements. However, funding for these, uh, these improvements, uh, is going to be a big and expensive issue. So my first suggestion is that the Berkeley County Council, uh, put on its agenda, uh, an action item, uh, and regarding Route 9 funding, a request to West Virginia's elected federal representative, Abito, Manchin, and Mooney, uh, the, uh, the Berkeley County, uh, uh, state legislators, uh, which were fortunate that we have the finance chairman from the West Virginia House of Delegates and the Senate President, both in Berkeley County, uh, and also, and also the governor. Uh, anything to help goose this along, I think would be helpful. When regarding to the unfun, unfunded liability, one of the issues that I've been concerned about for quite a while is the, uh, regional jails, which actually are state agencies that the county and all the counties have to put in their, their share on that and that's a, and that's a liability that the county shouldn't have to do. So I'm also asking for an action item to be on the agenda for the Berkeley, Berkeley County Council that, uh, particularly since there's going to be some changes in, uh, uh, tax, uh, tax policy, that state funding of the county regional jails, uh, be implemented 100% uh, with, uh, with a copy of this, uh, this position to, uh, Governor Justice, uh, Berkeley County State Legislators, uh, and, uh, also, uh, the West Virginia Association of Counties. I think both of these issues are ones that we really need and I'd like to see Berkeley County going on record on these, uh, and here's this along with all the others. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, one of the things I, I talked to Dave Kramer about a couple of weeks ago when he was in town was, um, and, and I know this is in your area, but Winchester and, and Frederick County done a wonderful job about 30 years ago doing Route 37 bypass around the west side of, of Winchester. However, Berkeley County could use something like that on the east side, going from Inwood down to Spring Mills, which will still allow all the traffic that wants to come into Berkeley County or into Martinsburg still get here by on-ramps and off-ramps, but allow people that want to go from the, from the north end to the south end to go around the bypass instead of congestion 81 as much as it is today.
Right.
It's a wonderful idea. Um, and, and the crazy thing is that if, if they're going to do it, they gotta do it sooner than later because the, the, it's only going to get more and more expensive every year goes by. I mean, tremendously more expensive.
The, the growth is continuing whether or not we do something about it. So something needs to be done that and also the bypass around Hedges.
Well, yeah, and they were talking, you know, they were talking, um, you know, hey, why don't we do Novak Drive? Well, Novak Drive is just a Band-Aid. It only takes Route 9, but if you do a whole bypass on the east side.
Right.
That takes care of everything. It takes care of 51, it takes care of Novak, it takes care of Route 9, it takes care of, uh, 45, it gathers them all and it, and it'd be so much safer for the residents of Berkeley County.
It, it does and, um, the, the congestion is getting to be more and more of a problem and with the growth we have, uh, something has to be done, but it's expensive and that's why I'm proposing the county go on record and push everybody along to get this, this funding because it's going to be a huge pressure.
Uh, I, I tell them all the time, Berkeley County could use a billion dollars. Would it be for infrastructure?
And it still wouldn't be enough.
Right here, today.
Yep.
So, all right.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Just take your name for the record, please.
Stephanie Phillips.
Okay.
Daughter of Luther W. Phillips. Morning, everyone. I'm really grateful that I came today. I wasn't actually planning on it. I think the new seal is very nice. Compliments to the artist and the people that approved it. You know, there's another sign that I've noticed recently in Berkeley County. That's the one on Route 9 that says to support our law enforcement. And I think that is a really good sign. Um, I'm getting ready to head south here pretty soon and take care of some of my family business, which is also in Appalachia. And that's one of the reasons why I really like that sign. I think it's really reflective of Appalachia. My family's ancestry is about to come out public with or without my help. And this year would be my father's 100th birthday. And I explained he helped direct me to your community and I chose to live in this community. Our family farm, which I am responsible for, on September 12th, 2001, I was sitting with the Justice Department while the federal government was trying to eminent domain the mountaintop for the Appalachian Trail Project. Really, their intention was they wanted the water. And, you know, I stocked up the provisions and the supplies and this little house on 100 acres doesn't look like much, but in terms of survival, the location is perfect and it can really support life with very little outside service or help by design. And I stocked everything up. I put my toddler in the car and I drove back up here. My husband was here. He has an important job with the federal government with my background in education. I expected a lot of people to be migrating to our community and I actually thought I could be of service. You know, it is my belief that the panhandle is wedged between Maryland and Virginia, which are a lot stronger and wealthier. And with that comes a lot of challenges to our community. And wherever I go, my ancestry brings a lot of challenges to everyone, especially the civil servants, and I feel badly about that. I've been really trying to work very hard to bring a large group of people together to address some of the problems that we're facing in this region as it relates to national security. And just a brief update as far as, uh, working on an educational program to promote successful marriage and families. I did request some information from the Catholic Church about their pre-cona marriage preparatory class and a retrovi weekend retreat for struggling families. That may not be forthcoming. However, the introduction has been planned with CPR, first aid, anger management, conflict resolution, followed with general psychology education on the lifespan, especially childhood. And then common problems anticipated and planned for in, uh, is going to be forthcoming. One of the re, reasons why this area, I think, is challenged with our neighbors is we have a lower standard of, uh, divorce. And if West Virginia raises the standard to be more compatible with Maryland and Virginia, then a lot of the burden on our family court will be reduced. You know, domestic violence is one of the primary causes of death after you go through organized crime and petty theft. And with education and training proactively, it's going to be a lot better for everyone, our communities, our law enforcement, our social workers, but most importantly, our children. I still consider myself married and it has not been easy. You know, my father came up here to live with us. We weren't here two months before my entire family was compromised by a vendor who had been hired by the people who had had the contract previously to us to do remediation in the house. And I was very thoughtful and I saw what he was doing to call my father and put my father on the phone with that man. And when he got off, my father said, you show him the door and you tell him he's not coming back. Not long after that, he moved up here to help protect our family. So there will be more information forthcoming on our progress when I return back from.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Okay, any motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. President, I believe we approve the agenda as presented. If there's no other modifications or changes for Thursday, May the 19th.
All right, have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order?
Mr. President, I, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Dan.
Uh, not a question, but I'd like to say, um, uh, happy to see, I've seen some, uh, um, initial drafts come from CDC on the, um, on the Frog Hollow extension out to Route 9, which was nice. And I see the payment there. And I, I do have a question on, uh, on the, uh, what, what are we at with, uh, um, the partial rec and the, uh, CVC funding? The, uh, the visitors bureau funding, where are we at now?
I'm gonna bring you up to speed on that in just a minute.
Okay.
Um, just as follow-up to, to Council Person Delie, one page five of your purchase order log. Um, and, and we're wrapping up the fiscal year, so we're trying to, to, to make sure that we start the, the new fiscal year pretty, pretty clean. Um, you, you'll see that we did encumber a million, $60,000 out of the general fund cap, capital, uh, fund, um, for the replacement of, of the roof at 750 Baltimore Street. We've been working with Blackstone Roofing this week. The contract has been completely, um, done. They've ordered the, the steel, uh, that they, that they need, uh, and they will be meaning with jack, um, as they remove some of the, some of the equipment that's on top of the roof now. Uh, we've also, as Council Person Delie indicated, we have encumbered, um, the $57,000 for the design and engineering study of Frog Hollow Route 9. We have got some preliminary information from CDC on that. Um, they flew the drone over as much as they could, um, without violating, um, some, some airspace. So, um, they did release a partial, uh, drone photo of the proposed site and I think they plan on providing us some additional information on that soon. Um, I've actually encumbered that money out of your coal severance fund, um, which we had anticipated, uh, we would. Uh, on page six, uh, Michael Baker International, uh, the conceptual planning for Sportsman's Paradise, um, you, you approved that contract for $60,010. Again, I've encumbered that out of coal severance. Um, so that will be taken care of. It'll be encumbered in this year's budget and rolled over to next year. As far as hotel, motel tax, you'll see that there's two different distributions to parks of rec and the CBB. Um, they each budgeted $300,000 for a total $600,000. Through the, through April, which is 11 months, they've each received $375,990.51. So through 11 months are actually $75,000 ahead of budget. So it, it shows that tourism is on the, on the, the rebound.
Yep, that's for sure. And that's what I thought, that's why I asked that.
Well, I think it's, it's not only that, but I think a lot of it's got to do with the activity going on in Berkeley County.
Absolutely.
Um, and during the recession, um, many people remembers, it, it's amazing how, um, shorten, uh, some people's memory is on, on how things got really stagnant very quickly. So, but you have any questions on?
No, well, I just, I, I don't, uh, I don't see any, or I haven't seen, maybe, uh, maybe Eddie would know. I, I haven't seen any new hotel, uh, hotels being, uh, slated to be built in the county, is it?
No, no, definitely not.
I seen, I seen a piece inside the city that I think maybe, but I'm not sure.
That's staked out? There's a stake, the job, the property that's staked out?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
Mr. President, I've had a couple of questions. I apologize, uh, for not reaching out earlier, but it's a little bit, just a little bit busy this morning. Um, priority install for the K-9 unit, 4300, is that for parts that we needed?
Yes.
Because I, I, we're doing all those installs.
We're doing all the installs.
We just need some parts.
But some specialty parts we have to get from priority.
Okay. And, uh, explain to me, just from my understanding, uh, with the regional jail, uh, reimbursement, actually credits, uh, I know Penny tracks those.
Penny and Tracy do.
I, I try to follow you on that, but there's, there's a lot of information on some of those sheets, so if somebody could just help me a little bit.
Come on, Tracy, come forward, please.
She says she'd be happy to.
She did.
I did.
Usually she don't want to come up for us.
Make us happy.
See? We're getting you acclimated.
At the beginning of the month, Kimberly with, um, West Virginia Recsion sends me, um, a document and I forward it to Katie and Tim. They review it, um, and then they go through, they scan it, they go through, they send it back to Kimberly and there she sends me credits or debits when, um, inmates that, um, have either been released or shouldn't be there or whatever the case may be. So I take those credits, um, and save them to the end of the month, um, and use those towards the bill. So they come.
So basically prosecutor's office that don't alter going there billing?
Yes.
Well, and our staff, because I know our staff has caught things in the past, uh, that didn't quite add up. It, it between you or Penny had caught things in the past, I thought.
No, I mean, I, I rely on them to send me those, um, debits and credits, um, all through the month. Um, Katie and, um, Tim are on it as far as, and maybe Brad, Grace, um, they monitor that, um, and then we keep track on that. And then the general school, of course, that part, I'm not sure about all that. Alan would have to, um, that's another, um, allocation that comes off of that total amount on the jail bill. So I get, I get the invoice. It tells me it's such and such amount. Then I start deducting every credit that I get, um, through the month. And I deduct that allocation that we get from general school, which is in the reports.
And they've just reformatted some of their recording, um, which even makes.
Yes, it helps Katie a lot, yeah.
And it's in, um, it's in an Excel spreadsheet now, so particularly Katie's staff, they can sort it any way they want. So it's easier for them to identify, uh, those credits that need to come off. They've been very, very, very helpful. And, and Brad, as our, um, one of our data guys, he, he works on it also, IT.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on the purchase order? Internal budget revision. Mr. Davis, you have one?
Yes, sir, I have one. Um, this is actually an anticipation of encumbrances. Um, the deadline for encumbrances is tomorrow and we have received a handful. Most of them were pretty small, but as you know, we typically get, um, several large encumbrances for the, um, Sheriff's Department Tax Office. And this particular, um, internal budget revision is in anticipation of the encumbrance that I'll be presenting next week as it applies to advertising and publications. Sheriff is requesting that they be allowed to reduce line 230 processing and contributions by, uh, $16,500. Current unencumbered fund balance is $41,259.20, which will leave a balance in that account of $24,759.20. Um, most of that balance will be encumbered next week for purposes of processing the tax bills. And then increase line 220, advertising and publications by $16,500. Current unencumbered fund balance is $33,764.80. Um, that will bring up the total in advertising and publications to $50,264.80. Next week I'll be, uh, presenting an encumbrance request, um, for advertising publications for the second half of the tax sale, um, in the amount of $50,232. So that takes care of the advertising. So it's a long way saying we're moving some money around within 409, but we have enough budgeted where the sheriff will not be coming to the council and asking for an, an additional infusion and, and that. So that's good news.
All right. Any questions on that internal budget revision? There is no encumbrances, Mr. Davis?
No, sir, I'm gonna do them all next week.
Okay. Change in status, we have quite a few. New hire recommendation received from Tim Zier, Community Correction Director for, uh, Jordan Baylor, as a peer recovery coach effective May 24th, 2022, with an annual salary of $37,509. Lori Proudfoot, um, as a recovery technician, effective May 31st, 2022, with an annual salary of $37,509. And Quincy Miltonberger, as a home confinement officer, effective June 1st, 2022, with an annual salary of $37,509. Letter resignation received from the emergency services, uh, from Philip Barrow, uh, effective May, uh, 25th, 2022.
Mr. President, if I may, Mr. Barrow is actually resigning from his full-time job that's, that's going to stay on as a part-time firefighter.
Okay, all right.
We're happy with that.
Okay. Uh, request received from Sheriff Nathan Harmon to remove Elaine Mercurio from payroll effective May 11th, 2022. Letter resignation received from the day report center from Janesa Lowens, effective May 27th, 2022. Letter resignation received from the prosecuting attorney's office for JAM's Alliance, effective July 15th, 2022. Letter resignation received from the recovery resources, uh, services from, uh, John, Jonathan Rudy, effective May 16th, 2022. Letter resignation received from home confinement from Renaud Collins, effective June 2nd, 2022. Didn't butcher anybody's name, Penny? All right. All right, we have approval minutes. Everyone was present from May the 5th, 2022. Everybody okay with that? All right, we have county council calendars. Um, we, um, we're here next Thursday at, uh, 9:30 AM and, uh, Memorial Day would be Monday. The offices will be closed on forge and commissions. We have, let me see, we have 4:00 PM Health Board on the 23rd on Monday, 4:00 PM Historical Landmarks, Tuesday to 24th. We have no boards in commissions right now. Wednesday the 25th, 1:00 PM CBB, 3:00 PM Senior Services. Thursday, the 26th, 5:00 PM Ambassad Authority, 5:00 PM Library Board. Any changes or corrections?
The Health Board meeting will be in Berkeley Springs.
And that's, uh, Monday, okay. All right, we have an order for Fund 103, Public Safety Contribution Fund. Um, any questions on that one?
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
All right. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved?
Have a motion on the floor. A second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Uh, board meeting reports, Mr. Barnhart.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, had a, uh, water board meeting Monday, which I could not attend because we're visually cert, uh, certifying the votes and that went till, what, 6 o'clock and the board meeting started at 5:00, so that was an easy decision to fix that one. But I also had an Interstate Council meeting, uh, Hagerstown Eastern Panhandle Metropolitan Planning Organization. Um, and, uh, the air conditioning at the airport wasn't working, so it was like 100 degrees in there. So the meeting went very quickly.
You know, that's been an issue for years. I mean, they've worked on that and worked on that and it seems like, uh, it, it get it for a little bit and then.
That's at the terminal?
Yeah, it wasn't working Monday. I don't know how it was in the restaurant, but it was pretty bad in the.
Yeah, I was out, I was out there Monday.
So we have met and approved various things. Uh, the one interesting was the EPTA commuter bus service implementation plan to Ashford, Virginia, which they approved.
So about a couple of years in the making.
Yeah, but it looks like it may be coming.
To fruition.
Yeah.
To fruition.
Yes, coming, coming up. And then we reviewed Matt Nolan Lex's record as, you know, as executive director. He's doing an exemplary job. And of course, his assistant has quit months ago, so he's doing his job plus his assistant's job. So, uh, we're very happy with this.
All right, Mr. Delie.
Um, I did attend the, uh, airport meeting. Um, this, uh, had the, uh, budget approval for the upcoming year. We had, uh, um, we had some, one of the planes that, uh, came under management, um, had some, a, a bunch of upgrading that needed to be done in order to get it, uh, um, uh, to where we could use it as planned. So that was, that, that kind of reduced the, the projected budget a little bit, but, uh, fortunately we have another plane that, um, we're going to have out there as well. And so that moved us back forward above where our budget was before. I think we're at, if I remember right, it's 3.2, 3.5, almost 3.5. Um, but, uh, when the other one comes on, um, it, it, we're being conservative with the numbers. So it looks like it'll actually exceed that once we get the other one on, on track.
Okay.
Moving forward, it's great to see them continue to grow. Uh, every time, every time we look at the budget, it's, uh, it's going in, in the, the forward direction.
Good. Mr. Whitaker?
Yes, sir. I also had the EPTA meeting and it was held up here at the campus of votes, so I wasn't able to attend that. I attended the Airport Authority. I attended the Airport Authority meeting a little bit late, so thank you, Dan, for kind of showing in there. We did have a MRB Foundation meeting after the Authority meeting and discussion of the upcoming events and some announcements we're going to be having here real soon that's going to be taking place. Um, there's going to be, uh, on the, July the third, it will be, uh, the official announcement of a couple of things. But, um, we're going to, uh, hopefully have, um, a couple of surprises come up out there for the, uh, for that day. So looking forward to it. And we're always looking for good volunteers. We're gonna need some for, um, vendor parking, for the parking areas, uh, cleanups, uh, I don't know. Trying to make it happen. I don't know, community service could be possibly used, but it's on a weekend. So I got a head shake back there from Tammy. I'll, I'll defer everything to them to see what we can work out with Nick on that day. So, thank you.
I'd like all your volunteers just been taken care of.
Uh, well, we, we meet a bunch, so thank you.
Mr. Gokhanar.
Yes, sir. Had the, uh, opportunity to attend the duck derby and the collab run. And both of them were so well organized. A lot of fun held by the folks participating. And I actually went to the collab run to offer, you know, what you need, help with. They had everything covered. And, uh, both of those events were handled extremely well and a lot of fun.
And well-attended.
And very well-attended. You know, when you see, you know, probably three hundred adults and, uh, and children running down those long side of a creek cheering on their ducks and stuff, to just, to just stand back and watch them, it was, it was fun. It was. And my granddaughter actually won third place on her, in her class level.
Is that right?
Yeah. So she was very embarrassed, uh, but my other grandchildren were cheering her on.
Yeah.
It was, it was fun.
It was a great location that will actually tie in nice to the trail when it's done.
Oh, it's beautiful down there. It, it really is. I mean, it's, it's just a perfect setting for something of that nature. The Planning Commission, uh, met on Monday evening. We had four public hearings and a relatively short meeting. Uh, there really wasn't, uh, a whole lot of activity with that. Tuesday, Parks and Rec, uh, meeting. We had a lot of sports camps and clinics going on, uh, being scheduled for the summer. A lot of their programs are full. They're currently working on the pools. They're doing some relining and that kind of stuff, getting the pools up. And, uh, they'll be right on schedule for Memorial Day. Uh, their finances appear to be strong. There's also a Memorial Day breakfast that's been held for many, many years at the park on Memorial Day weekend as a fundraiser. And, uh, we had some complaints on maintenance issues that were addressed also during Tuesday's meeting. In particular with mowing and, uh, the road at the, at the soccer field. So those things were addressed. And, um, let's see here. Also on Tuesday was the Sewer Board, uh, which the, they approved their budget for the Sewer Board and the Stormwater Board. Those, those boards approved their budget that evening. The Jaristown Pump Station is moving well along. They're, they're heading on up Gold Miller with their force main right now. I think that they're right near the top of a hill, so that's where they ought to slow down a little bit. I think there's a considerable amount of rock there. Unless the Water Department, when they put their line in, maybe loosen up some of the rock, but I think they may slow down a little bit there. The Rosedale Cemetery Connector, uh, the pipe is here. The only thing they're waiting on now are manhole covers for manholes. They're waiting on those. Uh, the Woods Resort, you know, they've got the engineering firm looking at replacing that the lagoons in the package plant that's out there. Uh, they're doing a lot of work to be able to get that plant squared away and get it out of the violations that's been, been in for quite a while. So there's a lot of work to be done there.
The violations were the part of the adoption that they took, when they took that
Yes, sir.
It wasn't, it's not there was trouble there. And typically, they weren't, they wouldn't take those plants over when they were needing repairs and violations. But the DEP was pretty, I think, forceful trying to get them to take them over. So they inherited a lot of those issues.
Yeah, well, and like I say, they've got, they've got engineering firm right now, you know, working on those details for that plant. Stormwater Board, uh, that was also another relatively brief meeting. But I know that their staff was busy, uh, on the several days after just because of the large amount of rain, uh, that we had over the last, last week. And then, of course, uh, the three-quarters of inch of rain that fell in about twenty minutes caused some issues as well. So I know their staff's been busy addressing complaints and issues.
All right. Uh, real quick, I had Fire Board meeting, um, on Thursday. Uh, Hedgesville Chief Nichols has stated that the, that fire hall is purchasing a tower with, uh, I guess their own funds. Um, the, um, roof on Beddington's main station that they currently have, uh, is needing, uh, two sections of that replaced, and they had to do emergency repairs as well. Because the water was coming into the, into the, uh, facility. Also Beddington, um, has a contract on the property at Dupont. So they have that, uh, uh, possibly sold and set up for closing year shortly. They also were starting to talk about, um, um, a need for a possibility of a referendum on a ballot for fire fees. Um, they spoke mainly because of the, um, apparatuses and buildings and really didn't talk about any additional staffing. So that's, um, that was what was talked about on, at the Fire Board meeting on Thursday night. As Councilperson Gokhanar said, we had the duck race that, that Matt organized and done a wonderful job. It was a very exciting day. The mayor and I had our own duck race, and that was, that was good for us to show that how, how well we get along and, and had a great time together doing that. So, um, just another thank you to Matt for organizing that. Uh, we have a new application, uh, received from Tracy Regali, Regali, I must say, uh, for Senior Services. Uh, any, you want to bring her in for an interview or? Okay. All right. We'll set that up. Okay. Um, next on our agenda, any other activity on Boarding Commission? All right. Next on our agenda is Tracy Gillums, uh, Grants Administrator, acceptance of, uh, Physical Year Twenty-three Record Management Preservation, uh, Grant.
The Record Management Preservation Board Grant, we were awarded, um, fourteen thousand five hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-two cents. The total project is fifteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars, and there's a required match of one thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighteen cents. And it will go, the circuit clerk gets, um, ten thousand for personnel cost for digitizing, purging, shredding records that are authorized for destruction. And four thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars goes to the county clerk's office, um, to purchase specialized binders for record books and sleeves to put the pages in that will, um, protect them. And those are seven of the worst binders that they have over there. So they're the oldest.
Okay.
And our match just comes out of the, the budget allocation. It's not requesting the additional funding from the council.
Okay, all right. All right. Um, we need a motion to approve.
So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor. A second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. And we also have an acceptance of WB, uh, Physical Year Twenty-two SBIRT Grant.
The West Virginia Bureau of Behavior Health had a grant for an expert, a screening, brief intervention and referral to treatment grant. Um, it is for twelve months. We requested in the grant sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars, and that's what they awarded. And it will pay for the expert specialist case manager's salary in fringe. A computer equipment of fifteen hundred dollars and general office supplies for three thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars.
And this is someone that would be in the day report center?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Uh, anybody have any question for Tracy on that one? Entertained a motion. Now, motion on the floor. And a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
Before you leave, I just want to point out, um, Tracy and, and her, um, successfully
Tracy, April, and Elizabeth.
Successfully submitted the Sampson grant last month, which is before it was due. Um, it was probably from what she tells, but Tim tells me five of those complex grants you've ever, ever done.
Every grant from now till the end of the year, that was very intense.
Completed it
Four million.
Yeah, a million dollars each. Completed it about a week, about this prior to its deadline. So unlike some of the previous ramp riders we have, she did not wait until the last minute.
I'm never late. If I'm late, it's because I'm a busy woman.
So she did, they did, Tim said it was very, very, very intense. I just wanted to recognize her for the hard work. It was, it was tough.
Yeah, we can't say enough about what you all did for us. So appreciate it, as always. All right, thank you.
And Elizabeth was looking for work.
Is that right? All right, let's, uh, take a break and we'll be back.
Next on our agenda is Dave Urban, President of Berkeley County Emergency Ambulance Authority. Ambulance Authority update, sir.
You bring up podium forward a little bit.
Not too much, he gets a little nervous.
Yeah.
Stay too close to me.
Yeah. Can't be able to reach me.
Throw something at him.
We have a presentation there.
Well, thank you for having us. As Mr. Coven here just said, I'm David Urban. I'm the President of the Berkeley County Emergency Ambulance Authority. I've been with the board for about seven years. So there's three things that we want to achieve today, and we'll try to be brief. But one is just to show you where we've been over the last seven, eight years. And I think when we, for those of you who are not involved in the day-to-day activities of what we do at the ambulance authority, I think you'll be pretty pleased with what we've done with the resources that we have in order to provide service to the residents of Berkeley County. And we've really upgraded our capabilities, and so we hope to show that to you. Second is, you know, we're really at a crossroads of having to make the next big jump in growth, you know, just to try to meet the needs of the county. And so that's where the crossroads is, is, you know, how do you make that next big jump? Build the building, buy new ambulances, put EMTs and paramedics in those ambulances, the training, the equipment. So we're there. And then, so with that, you know, we're going to ask for an increase to the service fee to help fund these improvements, which we'll describe to you. And then third, and finally, we're just going to give you kind of a little bit of a roadmap to where we see things going for the next five and perhaps 10 years, and really kind of justify the need for the increase and how those funds will be deployed. So first picture here, I think, Mr. Whitaker and Mr. Oak, you'll recognize this is South Berkeley Ambulance. I think this is like a 1970, 80 era.
It's a 1969 Pontiac.
19, see, I knew you would know. 1969 Pontiac. And then that's, I think, a 2020 F-450, so that's a two-ton. So we've gone from the station wagon to, you know, basically a box truck. With that, we've, although the exterior's significantly improved with capability, what's inside is the real difference, and we'll talk a little bit about that.
I was going to say, Eddie, back in 1969, that was pretty much just a transport vehicle, right? Be awful hard to work on in a station wagon.
It wasn't really the, you know, the size of the ambulance. It was truthfully, at that time, it was the skill of the person rendering care. Nothing compared to their expertise and knowledge today.
Right.
I mean, they can do so much more. But, but no, 1969 has a 455 cubic inch motor in it, and it will flat out run.
That's pretty impressive.
It'd pass everything but a gas station.
Yeah, sure, yeah. So just to give you a comparison, next slide is just, so earlier this year, knowing that we had a lot of challenges facing us and how are we going to handle the growth, we put together Strategic Planning Committee that we've been meeting throughout the year. And one of the first things we really did is we said, okay, well, what is our mission statement? So this was a statement that was created by both the employees, the management, and the board, and it just simply says, "To provide exceptional emergency medical services within Berkeley County utilizing teamwork, innovation, technology training to create favorable outcomes and provide immediate lifesaving interventions." Now, I think this is one that strictly just the employees came up with. We came up with a tagline, which we want to put up on all ambulances. Just simply says, "If emergencies happen, our family will be there caring for you." State legislature gave you as the governing body, the commissions and councils, a funding source, and basically said, hey, you need to provide these services for the citizens in your community, and enlisted a funding source, one of those being establishing an ambulance authority and establishing a user fee. So the ambulance authority was established in September of 1988 by then Berkeley County Commission. And in 1989, they set out their first user fee. That was $25 per resident household. That was changed, I'm sorry, yes, in 2001, they went up to 35. Five years later, it increased to 50. And the last one we had was in 2011, which over 10 years ago, to the current rate of $60. Okay? As you know, for that fee, we were providing free BLS transports to our citizens. Through lobbying our Congress folks, they gave us an exception of what they call St. Harbor in February of 2018, which allowed us to do what they call a T-WIP for whatever free service we were giving for that fee. And what that says was, and you guys are aware of that, is that we could bill that insurance company for that BLS call and not balance bill our citizens with their portion for that BLS call, because that's what we were giving is free. And that allowed us to take in some more of that revenue that we were giving away. So that's kind of, so if there's some questions, and if we were doing it about every five years, how did you guys stay involved for 10? That's what we've done. Next slide, please. This slide here is just a comparison of how the county council's budget has grown from 2011 to next year, 2023, and how the ambulance authority's budget has grown as well. As you can see, it looks like the county council's increased their budget about 87.7% and the ambulance authority about 76%. What's significant about that is, is that we are not able to keep pace with how the county's growing. You know, we're behind that by almost 10 to 11%. So that's one of the big keys that kind of broke us in there. Next slide, please. This is a key change, is between 2011 and 2021. I'm not going to insult your intelligence. You can look down through there, you see how our population has grown. Our assets and revenues as an organization has grown because we've had to, you know, we've had to build buildings, to house these people, to have more crews, and things of that nature. You can see that our call volume, based on requests and transports, I can tell you at the end of this year, it will probably double where we were in 2011. And then you can see how we've grown with units and service. In 2011, we had three 24-hour ALS units, a 12-hour ALS unit, no BLS unit, and one supervisor. Currently, we had four ALS units for 24, two ALS units for 12, one BLS unit for 24, and one supervisor. We're stretching it thin, I can tell you. You see our numbers on our staffing and how that relates to our population. See our full and part-time staffing there, and then we listed the cost for recruit. I'll never forget when a one-star general looked me in the face and said, "I can have a billion dollars of equipment, but if I don't have that $40 butt to put in the seat, it doesn't seem good." So that's why this is important.
And if I could stop you just a couple minutes, please. I've just done some quick summary here, real quick. 89 to 2001 was, there was 12 years there between that increase over the $25 to $35. And then you had a five-year timeframe between 2001 and 2006, then you had another five-year between 2006, 2011. I'd like to say that the ambulance authority, the members of the board, the staff, office staff, infield staff, have done such a good job that they haven't came back to us, I'm going to say 11, but actually 12 years, it's going to be 2023, without an increase. So that says a lot about how that's been ran. And the other thing, too, is when that happens, you got to think, you know, there could have been two increases by now.
Yes, sir.
Going into the third, which, you know, again, they've done such a good job, they've grown, they've done everything they need to do. And one of the things that I always talk about, and I just talked about it just last week, was, you know, as the county grows in population, people think, well, you're going to turn back around and be able to be sustainable without any increase, only because of the growth. Well, the growth only, what happens when you have growth, your call volume goes up, as you indicated. But it doesn't never count for any inflation at all, right? So it's just, all it is, is the service. But it doesn't count that the ambulance is twice as much. You know, it doesn't count that the salaries have to be more. It doesn't count that the buildings cost, you know, three times more. So just wanted to throw that out there real quick.
Leaving something that's probably more tangible, that anybody watching that you guys knows, fuel costs. Three quarters ago, our fuel costs were about $4,800 a quarter. Just this past quarter, over $13,000. And it's not that the mileage is, you know, or our, you know, it's not that we're going any further, it's just the cost. So you're absolutely right. You handed out a sheet, right? I know Chad had handed out a sheet to you guys with call volume. I'm going to let him come talk about that. But the one thing I do want to add that's not reflected in these numbers is our mutual aid partners. When you look at those, the total number of calls and the responses is, last year, our mutual aid partners came into our run area 173 times in a 12-month period. In the first six months of this year, that number was 138. So we anticipate that number doubling. So that tells us that we're either going to tax other services to help us out, or we need to grow. And that's just the telling story right there. So I'm going to have the chief come up and talk to you guys about his numbers.
Brian, we had a conversation back when we were dealing with COVID about teams being out, and how you guys were going to be able to handle that. And I remember you came back, and we had another conversation shortly thereafter. And in between that period, I had done a lot of thought process of my own about how it was going. And I was amazed at that point that you guys weren't in front of us trying to increase what you have for operations at that point.
Well, that's, these things are always very tender, is a nice way to put it. So you never want to, you want to know when you're going to stand in front of you guys and ask for something, isn't it? So sometimes it's a little bit later, but I just want you to know we're going to be here today.
As you all can see from the numbers, we've altered them a little bit to give you a pretty good snapshot as to where the department is right now. We look at our call volume on two specific numbers, transports and responses. Transports being the most time-consuming process that our crews do. We have about 70 minutes per transport, on average. So you're seeing that this year, we're tracking for 8,100 transports, which is going to be up significantly from the prior year at 7,500. We've never seen a year-to-year increase at that kind of level. But also, our responses are growing as well. And we have a, you know, for non-transport outcomes, about 47 minutes wrapped up in those times. We've broken those numbers down for your review, and at the back of that page, double-sided, you'll see that we've listed out for your reference, not only the stations, the numbers they correspond with, but also what their staffing levels are. One thing I would like to point out is that those very large numbers for 96 are just between the ambulance, the two ambulances. The ALS supervisors' numbers do not factor into those responses of transports, we track those individually. So you'll see the station 97 is very busy, which is marked for embroiled, so I'm going to close the lines. One thing that we are very proud of, that we've done over the past, you know, seven to eight years, is ambulance authority, with the help of a lot of partners, has invested very heavily in technology. We've done that to make sure that we can follow our mission statements and improve these patient outcomes, which we absolutely have. Whether it's been through software to make our fleet more efficient, we have invested in new charting software, which took our average on-call, our time-on-task time, and decreased it by about 20 minutes per call, which had our units back in stations, ready to respond to patients. We have made gigantic improvements to employee safety in the form of power cots and power load systems. We have automated CPR devices, we now have ventilators. And all of these improvements that we have done have really been in, you know, one thing, improving patient outcomes. It's obviously, for healthcare in the 21st century, something that we see as what we have to continue to do. We're always going to have to be on the cutting edge to make investments into technology. We've put ourselves in a great position now to do so, and being able to secure funding mechanisms for the future will make sure that we're able to do that. The last note on that slide, kind of a direct result of what we have been able to accomplish, tooting our own horn. We have had quite a number of accolades over the past seven years, through both the American Heart Association, the International Trauma Life Support, is an internationally renowned certification for the care of injured folks. We have placed second twice at the international competition for that sending teams. We've participated with state and federal agencies on developments of protocols and on developments of information. And we are an agency that has sought out for our counsel and our expertise with people.
The enhancement of the apparatuses on the ambulances, how important is that to the community and the people being transported?
It is of the utmost importance. If we hadn't updated what we did, not only would we not be able to provide the care that we can provide, but we probably would have earned the waste of it.
Thank you, Chad.
Obviously, our director and our chief and the rest of the staff, you know, they are very skilled and knowledgeable in EMS, much more so than myself. I'm just the layperson. But I do know numbers. I'm a geek when it kind of comes to numbers, so I guess that's the banker thing. So in your packet on the screen, there's a, you know, there's a lot of numbers there. And what we're trying to do is, rather than go over each of these numbers, I just want to give you a couple takeaways from each slide. But the numbers that you'll see in yellow, those are numbers that actually come off of our audited financial statements, so they may be real numbers, and then all the other numbers are supporting numbers. But the two numbers that I would just point you to on this particular slide is, the bottom right-hand corner, you see 53% and 86%. And what that represents is, if you just look at the numbers in the left-hand column, that's the revenue that we get from billing insurances and patients for service like ALS and what we can bill for the BLS. And so if you just look at last year, you know, we billed 5.2 million, but we can only accept what the insurance will pay, in a contractual agreement. So if you look there, we wrote off 1,875,000, then we come to the contractual balance. Then of that, that's the amount we're allowed to collect. And then, as you know, whether it's through an accident, sickness, divorce, whatever the case may be, life changes. You know, some people just can't pay the bills. Oftentimes, when people have a significant event, it leads to other situations. And so you can see, you know, on average, we write off like another almost 375, average 402,000 is what we write off uncollectible. So the point in all this slide really is that for every dollar we bill, we really only collect 53 cents of every dollar. But of every dollar that we're allowed to collect, we get 87%. And so I would tell you that our collection department does an excellent job, because if you compare that 87% to other medical services, we're pretty high up there. But this is why the service fee is so instrumental, in that if we continue to operate at 53%, we would obviously, we'd be thankful, we couldn't do it. So the takeaway here is that, you know, we can bill all we want, but we can only collect 53%. And that's off of what I'd call the user fee, or people actually use the service. Next slide is just the service fee, and this is the ordinance. And again, a bunch of numbers, the numbers in yellow is what we actually collected each of the last seven years. I thought you might be interested, because I know we talk a lot about growth in the county. In the left-hand column, there's a number of billable households. You can see last year, we billed over 44,000 households. We average about 704 new households every year. Interestingly enough, we've updated the slide a little bit since we prepared it, because several months have gone by. Since December, so starting in January through the end of April, so for four months, we've added 560 new households. So we will far surpass 11 or 1,200 households for this billing year. So you can see, I mean, the growth, I know you see it on the county side, and what I'm saying is, on the service side, the households, that number's growing and continues to grow. And when you look at some of the growth taking place, like, say, up north, you know, like Cardinal points on the developments, I mean, it's just obvious that that's going to continue to grow. So, you know, what I would just say here is, you know, we're averaging 704 new accounts, will probably be well over 1,000 this year. That number continues to grow. The other numbers there, second from the right, is we're collecting, on average, 100% of what we bill. You say, well, how do you collect 101, 102%? Well, with the latency we get there. So again, I would say that the folks in the billing department are doing an exceptional job of collecting every dollar we can. We're not leaving anything on the table, and, you know, they're collecting every dollar they can of the service fee. The next slide, again, these are a little bit hard to read. I'll just briefly go through this one. Numbers in yellow on the left, that's from the user fee. You can see there's a big efficiency. That's made up by the service fee, and so the number from the right, that's the surplus that we have by collecting the service fee. And that's really what allows us to buy the equipment that Chad just talked about and to fund the growth, you know, because, you know, obviously, collections is a lagging indicator. You're collecting things from the past, you're getting in the future. You've got to build, you know, build that system out, so you've got to expend the money before you can collect it. So that gives us a little bit of money to, you know, work with going forward, hiring people, you know, buying equipment, building buildings, and so forth. So that's just kind of a little bit of an example there. This slide here is just seven years, these are our audited financial statements. Now, they are adjusted to take out the benefit of the CARES Act money that we received over the last two years. And simply, there's two takeaways from this slide. One is that you can see we're currently, bottom right-hand corner, you can see we're currently operating at a deficit. And obviously, we receive no CARES Act money this year. In the previous two years, had we not had that CARES money, we would have operated at a significant deficit. So again, we're already there to where, to your point, why didn't we come sooner? You know, we did have the benefit of that CARES money, I think, just like the county did, we were able to use that. But without that, we would have been at a pretty significant deficit. Again, very hard to see up here. Seven years ago, 53% of our funding source was through the service fee, and 48 was from people who actually used the service from the billing. That number's actually flip-flopped. You can see for this year, we're looking at about a 44% coming from the service fee, and 56 coming from the actual billing. So, you know, ideally, that needs to be, if you look, go back to that 53%, you know, we need to increase that service fee to supplement what we're not getting from the user fee. Okay, next slide, this is a little bit more tangible. So I thought it'd be important to show you, you know, what all of our neighbors are doing. Jefferson County is probably the toughest one to look at, in that their lowest fee is $39, and their highest fee is $33,000. Now, you say, well, who's 33? Well, that's the track, because it's built on the square footage and so forth. But, and that is for both fire and ambulance, you know, that's your EMS total system. Collectively, their total balance is about two-thirds of what ours is, and they do about half the calls. So they're collecting a little bit more money. But if you just kind of extrapolate that out, of their $3.9 million budget in Jefferson County, $3 million is funded directly through the county council. And so 77% of that is county council money, 23% is through the fee. If you extrapolate that out and said, what would the fee be, it'd be $195. So, now, that's fire and ambulance, and so you could say, well, $100 for fire, $100 for ambulance. But I went through that exercise just to show you that. Jefferson County, if they were structured like we were, their fee structure would probably be somewhere just for the ambulance, about 100. See, we're at 60. Morgan County's at 150, Hampshire's at 100, Parton's at 120. There's currently an ordinance pending a grant for 150, that has not passed. We learned yesterday that they're considering perhaps a levy to get additional funding beyond what they would get with 150. And then minerals, 125. So, you know, a question you would get as council members, like, well, why the significant increase in the fee? Why increase the fee? Well, if you just look at what our neighbors are doing, you know, we're significantly behind that. Next slide, please. And I apologize, Brian had come up. So with the increase in the fee that we're going to ask for, these are some of the specific things where that would be used for starting next year.
Okay, so this is the big question. What is the data telling us that we need to do to meet the EMS needs here in the county? We believe we need to add a BLS unit in both the north and south end of the county. The question might be, why BLS and not ALS? The question might be, why BLS and not ALS? It's about supply and demand. We've, when we, you know, five years ago, we looked at this, we wouldn't have believed that we would have that opportunity to use a BLS combined with ALS system. But that's what we think we need to do, is put those BLS units both north and south for 24 hours. That's going to require us to hire 16 EMTs full-time and then expand to add an additional supervisor should those units need to be upgraded to ALS. That would provide us two supervisors to do that. Plus, you're talking about a greater number of people and a larger span of control. So our estimates at today's numbers, that would cost us about 1.6, 1.629 million to do that. Our plan is to do our own in-house academy, hire people that have an interest, bring them on board, onboard them, and do like you see other larger places, get those folks there. That would require additional ambulances, one additional support unit, and that cost would be, based on today's numbers, around 755,000. We also looked at currently functioning in the Falling Waters area, we're in a modular home down there with a garage. We have 6.5 acres down there, so we believe that we're going to have to build that structure out at some point to bring it in line with the needs of the community in the north end of the area. So you're looking at, just on those numbers alone, about 2.379, $2.4 million just to do that. So that's pretty significant. So for your consideration, we've offered two proposals. Do you want to go over those?
Yeah, I'll say a couple of things just, so when you look at where the money's going and you look at the call record that Chad handed out, you can see that, you know, the, obviously, the busiest station is 9-7. We've just did the building project there. That's where we buttoned down. We're good to go there for probably 10 or 15 years, and we think that facility's going to service well. We just did an upgrade out in 9-8, but now we need to put, you know, some more assets out there and know where to deploy. 9-8 is our second busiest station. You can see from that, from the call recording we handed out. Next busiest is going to be the north, Station 9-6. And as Brian said, you know, the plan had been all along, because we have the property there, to just build that out. And I'll tell you that in the last couple of days, I've actually had some discussions with, and this is preliminary, but just to share your policy of where we're going, had some conversations with Hunter Wilson. He and I have really talked and said, you know, I think the way forward is we're going to have to do some things collaboratively. And of course, you know, they're building a facility in Beddington. He's asked us to be a part of that. So, you know, there's a good chance that sooner or later, we may enter into an agreement with Berkeley County Fire and actually be a part of that facility with them.
Berkeley County Fire and Beddington Volunteer Fire.
And Beddington, right. So it's a collaborative effort, and it gets confusing when you add all those together, but I just want to share with you where this money would be going. So it's obvious from the numbers that you see today, we've got to do something more up there. You know, we're kind of in a situation where we're at now, where, you know, we prove what we got, and we just do something altogether different. So we're going to look at that. That's going to be one situation, but I think we're going to have to do more collaborative efforts with other partners in the county to really grow. So that would be south first, it would be, you know, north next. I know one of the questions that several of the council members have is, what about out to the west? And, you know, specifically, like maybe off of that Mountain Lake Road. And so that's something that we're going to look at, you know, that's something that after we, you know, fill that position in south, you know, the north, you know, the next position might be out to the west there and actually do something collaborative with Berkeley County Fire there. And then, you know, then finally going west. So that's kind of our five-year plan, to try to meet the needs of the county immediately. And so, you know, sort of taking questions. But as far as our proposal, we think we need to be at about $110 for a service fee per household. And so, you know, that's a pretty big jump. And so for a lot of folks, that might be a little bit of a gulp because we haven't had an increase in so long and because cost and inflation has climbed so fast. But that's what we think we need to be. We've got two proposals, really. The first one would be kind of, we approve the 110, and then we gradually increase it, you know, 75, 85, 95, 110. Or if it's more palatable, we'll just go with, you know, the increase all at once. But as Brian laid out, just in the first year, next year, if we do the things that he shared with you as far as the increase in BLS, the supervisors and so forth, the ambulances that we need, the equipment, it's just over 2.4 million. And the increase that we would get from the fee, if we were to be able to implement this in July 1, would be about $2,225, you know, if you look at the number of households and so forth. So, you know, even getting to 110 doesn't bridge the gap, and we're still going to have a little bit of shortfall. And now, we'll make that up as the county continues to grow. We'll continue to get money, and we'll be able to build more, but I just, it's not like we're going to have a huge windfall and, you know, we're going to have extra money. I mean, what we need to do, as I mentioned at the start, you know, we're at a crossroads. We really need to grow, and in order to achieve that growth, you know, we're going to have to put out some significant amount of capital. And so we're hoping to be able to accumulate that and get through the service fee.
So what do you say, what do you, can you say that again? What do you say the revenue increase would be?
It's about $2,225, you know. And that's based off where we'll think we'll be at households at the end of June 30. So at this time, I don't entertain any questions or comments, thoughts?
Just real quick, I mean, the call volume has went up tremendously, and we know that we talk about growth, and a lot of what you're talking about is the growth of the ambulance authority itself, being able to grow out, expand, increase the, as you said, Jefferson County's got half the amount, 50% of the call volume that we have. And I think that from your spreadsheet, that on the community needs and demand on the EMS services, as you said, Dave, this is mainly focused on 9-6 and 9-8 and doesn't do anything on the west side of the county, which we've been talking about that for at least the last two years. So, and this is the plan to take it from 60 to 110, is that right?
Correct.
For any questions?
Yeah, so if you were to look at, say, a five-year plan, you know, as Ryan indicated, you know, ideally, we want to put those ambulances and the employees in place, you know, what would you say, like July 1, if we could, really?
Or we're going to have to run a cad.
Yeah. So as soon as we can, I'll put it that way. And what the numbers tell us is that that's where the greatest amount of demand is. It's like it's going to be north, but we know we have to go east and west. And so that's kind of why I started the conversation and I mentioned Hunter Wilson, is that on our own, we can't go out there and keep expanding, you know? We can't build, you know, we can't build west, we can't build east, you know? We probably need something, you know, heading up to the west as well. And so, and of course, fire is still in some of the same pressure, you know, they need to increase their footprint. And so I think we're going to, if you looked at a five-year window, the idea would be to start meeting some of those goals within the next five years, but we're going to have to do it as a collaborative effort, find ways to work together. You know, up to this point, we've been pretty successful in working independently, with the exception of, Hedgesville's been very gracious and allowed us to have a unit up there, and then Bat Creek, you know, they've allowed us to have a unit up there. And really, without them allowing us to be a part of their station, we would not be able to afford to provide services to those areas of the county.
Right, and one of your busiest stations is also Beddington Substation, too.
Well, we did talk about 49, and so, yeah, and again, you know, we're a guest there. And so, you know, what we've come to the realization is, we can't do it on our own. The county's growing too fast, the demand is too high, and so we're just going to find, you know, creative ways to work collaboratively to, you know, to meet the mission.
And I'd like just to add a little bit to that. One of the things that happened quite a few years, probably at least 10 years ago, was that this council tried to work together along with the fire and EMS on, how long South Berkeley been done?
Four years.
Four years, but, so maybe it was about seven years ago, right before Dave got on. And the board is currently the board it is now, or was a couple of months ago. South Berkeley Volunteer Fire Department was interested in being part of that fire hall. The fire board was interested in that. Some of the county council was interested in that. At that time, the only organization that said, no, we're not going to lose money on anything we do, which I was trying to explain, that you're going to gain money by knowing what you're going to do, you're going to save taxpayers and use a huge amount of money over the time. So that got, South Berkeley, as we all know, had to go forward with their station. However, you all, while your all's renovations was going on in South Berkeley, you were in South Berkeley Fire Hall, and it worked out great from what I understand. And, but then, after that, they had to move on. They had to, so that's why they built the new station there in Martinsburg, which is 9-7. And then they had to upgrade the one on the south end. So this board, I'm thinking, is very supportive of partnering up, as the president has said, because it makes absolute sense.
Yeah, well, let me say this. So, you know, we started a strategic planning committee this year and really trying to look out five, and, you know, you can get beyond five, you're kind of guessing, but look out to five, 10 years, and where do we need to be? And so, and without blaming anyone else, some of those decisions that were made early on regarding, like, say, the South Berkeley station, were done long before myself or, you know, a lot of the current employees managed it. And so, you know, we'd made a pretty significant investment, and so, you know, in South Berkeley prior to that happening, so it didn't quite make sense, but, you know, had we been doing then what we're doing now and kind of planning ahead, I don't think we would have necessarily built that building. But then, once you're kind of in it, you know, we decided to make some improvements this year. But, you know, Mr. Gokenhour and I work together, own this South Berkeley, and that's a great project. And, you know, quite frankly, I kind of wish we were out there, you know, but that's not how it all played out. This stuff takes years of planning, you know, to just happen. So, and again, that's, I mentioned, you know, Hunter Wilson and I are talking to him earlier, and we're going to meet next week and discuss more possibilities, but I think, when you start relooking at the budget, and again, I'm kind of geeky on numbers, you know, and you say, well, how are you going to fund this? You've got to get creative, and you've got to find some ways to meet the demands, you know, that the county has, and that's what we're trying to do.
And I'd like to add Chief Broning, you know, Beddington is very much interested in doing this. I think it was his idea to say, hey, why don't we partner up? And so we want to thank Beddington as well, for sure, in trying to put all this together.
Yeah, I've got a couple of comments. Number one, I think your report was very well-delivered, a lot of information, and it's stuff that I recognize, especially the call volumes, you know, to be able to look at. I would hope that maybe the, and I know the calls continue to rise, but I would hope that the mutual aid would possibly either level out because I know a lot of that is tied up with your crews being at the hospital and their short staff weren't able to turn patients over, so it tied you up for quite a while before you were able to get back out on the street. I would hope that they, that the hospital is a little bit better shaped than what we were.
Yeah, it's funny you mention that because here's a picture of the hospital, one of the ones in the day, one's in the night. You can see, there's four ounces there and a support vehicle and five here. So to your comment specifically, you know, we do spend a lot of time at the hospital once we make a transport, and that's really, you know, hurt us.
Yeah, and especially when you didn't have somebody to turn your patient over to. The next thing is, and which I was making notes, you know, when you guys were talking, but being able to get services out in the Mountain Lake Road area out of Station 70, which is, you know, part of the Hedgesville Volunteer Fire Department, I would hope that we will be able to look at getting some staffing out there. It takes quite a while to get assistance there, and we all know the short window of time when somebody is in cardiac arrest for that amount of travel to that area. So, you know, I know that it's a very underserved area currently. The next thing I would ask is that, which I didn't see or hear, but anything about any corporate service fees? Because currently, everything's on homeowners, households, is to look at any corporate fees.
Yeah, we did some analysis on that, in fact, we did quite a bit, and it just doesn't seem like we're going to get the bang for the buck, so to speak, you know? When you really look at how we could bill that, and we did some modeling to see what that, how that would affect the revenue, it's significantly less than if we just increased the service fee. So we can share it with you, but that's something we thought is maybe we would do a split system, like someone would increase the service fee and start to build commercial. But, you know, the more we looked into it and did the modeling, it just didn't seem we were going to get that big of, you know, bang for the buck, so to speak.
Yeah, and I would also suggest that not a whole lot of attention be placed on the Jefferson County model at this particular time. I know a year or so, they reduced their fees, and now they're back into a scramble of being able to provide those services, you know, that are needed there. So when I look at the counties around us excluding them, you know, I see where you are greatly behind, but I also like the fact that you provided two separate options as a gradual payment increase versus ripping off the Band-Aid, you know, one shot. So it gives us a little bit better idea of moving forward.
Yeah, always, we would include the Jefferson County in there just because, you know, that's our neighborhood to the media or to the east, and so I thought that question might come up, so we did do some due diligence there, and we actually have the information right off the website of their payment structure, so.
Yeah, their 2023 budget, they're representing, are going to be 6.615 million.
Who's that?
Jefferson County. Of which they are going to increase this year's budget by 2.5.
So to your point, they're scrambling because...
And the thing with that is, is 89% of their costs is all waived, and 11% of voluntary services plus the budget that we present, which is about half or maybe less than that, is all inclusive.
The only thing that I would say, Anthony and Alan, I don't think we can do a step increase because it's something that's binding prior commissioners that we're not allowed to do.
I'll just look into that. I don't know if it's been done in the past.
I think you're right.
Yeah, I would think you could approve it at 110, but then phase it in. I mean, if you approve it at the higher number, but then phase it in, you're kind of sitting at, I mean...
And that may be the way to make it happen.
That might be the verge of it.
As opposed to approve the lower amount and...
That could be an option, yeah. That's a good getaway. I think that would be a little bit more permissible.
I agree.
Okay?
And of course, you'd have to go through the public hearing process.
Right, sure. Yeah. All right, so if I'm hearing correctly, this is the direction that you're wanting to go in, you're asking, right? This is your day to be asking for this, and so I guess we need to start setting up the public hearings and go from there.
I'll just say, I know in your package, there's a tremendous amount of information, a lot of numbers. We tried to validate those, you know, absolutely as best we could from the financial statements and things of that nature, but if after the meeting, you have any questions about how we can drive at numbers or where we think we're going, I'd certainly be able to answer those, you know, one-on-one and explain, you know, kind of the methodology.
I think I'm sort of like Councilperson Gokenhour, is that, you know, the commercial and industrial and all those people are actually using the service. I know, you know, I hear Macy's, we're out there a good bit, and I don't mean just them, I'm just saying, I'm using that example.
That's true.
And they have 5,000 other employees at peak.
I think it absolutely should be part of the calculation, that's for sure.
So, you know, to be fair to the residential, we need to think about, and we would need those numbers pretty quickly.
Yeah, we've done the modeling, so we can kind of produce that for you.
I think a couple of biggest concerns that stood out to us was this. We looked at, we got with the fire board, pulled property document information, about 1,600, 1,640 accounts. We just, you know, ran a flat rate of about $300 as being, you know, a fee and calculated some things from there. The biggest concern that we have is the way our ordinance is written is you wouldn't want, let's, for instance, Margolis LLC owns a apartment complex. let's, for instance, Margolis LLC owns, owns a apartment complex. Right now, each apartment complex pays an ambulance fee. You wouldn't want him to then turn around and go into litigation saying, well, I'm a business, it's a business, and now I just own, I only owe you one fee versus the fee for forty-seven individual individuals. So that was one of the concerns that we looked at as well.
So we can look at it as non-residential, right?
That's what I was looking at.
Yeah.
Got it.
We can provide that very quickly.
And it'd be, it'd be really, I know this would be really hard to do, but it'd be fair of trying to figure out some type of formula. Like I said, it's, and we run across this all the time, people here talk about it on the MS four, why does, why does my house pay the same amount as the, the large companies in town? It's on hundreds of acres. But, you know, even if it's a, a commercial business, they, there's many small commercial business mom and pops places that should never pay the same fee as, as someone that has five thousand employees or twelve hundred employees or two thousand employees, you know, should be completely different.
I think you can make an argument that an occupancy load on a property would be an adequate, adequate way to size that as, as opposed to a square footage, because if you did a square footage, I get the fire side of it, looking at square footage, but an occupancy load, just say, a...
Like warehouses.
A huge warehouse that has, you know, a small amount of employees as opposed to, as opposed to...
Manufacturing.
Yeah, a department store that has a, you know, five hundred occupancy load or something, you know, I think that, that's a, a big difference.
And a lot of your, a lot of your calls is going out on eighty-one, that's not, not even residents of Berkeley County, but we have to pay for it.
Well, and I think to that point, if you think about some of the manufacturing, a lot of those folks are driving income out of town, we're taking care of them, they get hurt on the job, and then, of course, we're paying them in other states.
Right.
It does put a burden on the house, but we'll bring that data in, look at it and evaluate it.
You said you looked at, how, did you look at it with occupancies or square footage?
We, we looked at both. The big thing there with the, and like I said, when you look at it and then you talk about pros and cons, the occupancy piece for us was, is who's got accountability of that? Are you taking the manufacturer or the landlord's word on it that, hey, I only have fifty employees? Or what is your, going to be your way to validate that? Because what happens when this guy...
You could probably get source documents, which you...
Yeah.
Those were some of the questions that came up when we were thinking about the validation of the occupancy, or do you do it based on what that place can handle, up here and say, hey, this facility was built to be occupied by X, Y, Z.
Smaller ones I can see where it's, it's tougher. The larger ones I would think would be approved by Fire Marshal for occupancy loads, so.
It'd still be tough.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would think if you, if you want to look at that route, I would suggest going by the actual persons on the premises, you know, what that average is. Like, like you made the example, Macy's, you know, they do have a high point, you know, especially around Thanksgiving to, you know, to the end of Christmas, whereas right now it's probably a little bit lower.
Right now, it's peak season, too. Weddings, weddings, man, they're getting married.
Good, good. Just to find that balance, you know, and instead of, instead of putting it all on the household, if that could be shared somewhat with corporate, you know, I'm not, I'm not asking for a tremendous amount of money from them, because that's something we've never done, but, but I just think that they've, they've got some responsibility here.
What, I can put you on what I see here, but what, what would you think would be a reasonable fee structure?
Well, I don't know, and it's, you know, I would have to really look at the non-residential uses that we currently have and then say, you know, how much money do, do we, would we like to be able to generate from this? You know, number one, it might be able to drive down the household income a little bit, or it could in fact bridge that loss that even at the end of, at five years, if you want to face. So...
Couldn't, couldn't, can you, don't you, you guys, I would imagine have data to, to be able to figure out how much, how much service you guys provide to industrial, commercial businesses?
Yeah, Chad could break that out as far as...
Yeah, so if you did that, if you did that with a percentage...
He's got very detailed call reports.
Yeah, I mean, if you did that with a percentage with residential, I, I know that, you know, drive cars and all that is part of it, but if you compared that to the residential to get a balance of what your percentage was, I would think you could probably figure out the load or the cost on that side of it. The numbers guy might be able to.
Well, you've given us some directions, so we'll take that, bring that back to you, provide it to you and, you know, your consideration.
Get us, get us the printout that the fire board has on commercial, industrial places. Send it, send Penny a copy, she'll send it all to us, so we can brainstorm.
You're not talking about tax documents, you're talking about what they bill?
Well, no, I'm looking, you also have the assessed documents.
Yeah, that's what we...
That will, right, we need those to...
That's what our...
Yeah, yeah, so we can brainstorm.
Okay.
All right. All right, thank you.
Well, thank you for your support and thank you for your considerations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody actually running anything today?
Yeah.
Brian. Send David Brian, oh, Brian's right there.
Stand.
Come back in. We're not done. Yeah. One of the things, as y'all was leaving, Councilperson Gokenhauer wanted to express everything, our thanks to each and every one of you, whether you're board members, whether you're field staff, office staff, on the job that you've been doing. I see it every month when, when I'm at the board meeting, but you're doing wonderful work and we want to continue to go in the path we've been going in. So Eddie, you can add to that if you like, please, and we'll go from there.
I just, I just didn't want us to miss an opportunity to thank you, because I don't see you like I used to, and it's good to see some familiar faces, and I, I know the services and the care that's provided to the public, and you guys do great work and keep it up, and unfortunately, you are going to get busier. I mean, that's just, that's just the way it is, got a lot of people like living here. So thank you for what you do.
All right. Anybody else?
I'd like to say the same thing. Thanks for, thanks for being there for the community and doing what you guys do. It's not something I'd want to do, but I understand that there's a, a, a big need for what you guys do, and it's not always the, not always the most glorious and thankful job to have, but we definitely appreciate what you do.
It's most incredible work, and I've never heard a bad thing ever about handling service in Berkeley County.
Actually, I'm kind of glad I don't get to see you all in y'all's working days, but I'm glad you're there.
Yeah. All right, thank y'all again.
And one thing I didn't mention, just as I was just now, is I've given a hundred percent of my pay back to the MS authority.
Well, that's very nice of you, Mr. Urban.
And every year, we add a zero.
Yeah, I know, every year, it's like, no matter how much you increase, it just comes back to you.
Thanks, sir.
All right, guys.
I got to see what you're doing.
Mr. Doyle, good to see you.
Good seeing you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnhart, good to see you.
All right, thank you.
And I like the outfit.
That's his regular clothes, what are you talking about? That's what he's been wearing the last two hundred and fifty years.
All right, next on our agenda. Next on our agenda is Mike Rezak, West Virginia Corp, Vivian Parsons, West Virginia Corp Company Nurse Pilot Program.
Mike, I'm just going to give him just a little bit of background, and then you're on. As the councils are aware, at renewal time last year at this time, we talked about our rising property casualty premium. As a result of that discussion, in early October, actually, October sixteenth, I met with Chris Carey, who's the administrator of the risk pool, as well as Steve Rawlings, who's the director of operations, to talk about our overall property casualty program. And it became apparent then, and we already, we, we already knew what the numbers were, because we've been a member of the risk since its inception, and we, we tracked our premium increases pretty, you know, pretty detailed over the last ten years. We know that workers' comp is, is the driver of our, of our premium. For the past three years, where our workers' comp premium represents somewhere between forty and forty-five percent of our total. So as a result of that discussion, they agreed that they would look at some programs to see what we could do, not only training programs, but maybe some, some risk reduction, some further risk reduction programs to, to further help us along. You know, Mike and Vivian and Tracy and I met, I guess, in, I don't know when it was, a couple of months ago?
Yeah.
Yeah. Actually, February, February twenty-second, thereabouts. We met to discuss a pilot program that they wanted us to be a participant of, and we liked the idea, and we'd like to implement it effective July first, and we've already, I think we have all the census information.
Yeah, we have all of the information that we need.
But before we roll it out, because it is going to be different for our employees, it's, it's going, actually, it's going to be different for all of us. We wanted the council to be aware, because as you know, anytime there's a new program implemented, there's always some, some hiccups, and you folks, you know, we'll be able to do a hundred things right, but the first time there's a little hiccup, you're, you're going to hear about it. If this new program doesn't work, it's no good, we don't know why you did it. So we ask, you know, Mike and Vivian to come up and explain it to you and get your blessings before we roll it out, and we do want to make this effective July first.
So this is basically like a telehealth for workers' comp?
Basically, what this is designed to do is change the way that you're currently reporting workers' compensation, and, and if you've got the time for it, I'll, I'll kind of take you through the play-by-play, step-by-step, what that looks like. But I really do appreciate that great synopsis from Alan, that's exactly what we're designed to do. So appreciate having a little bit of time in front of you to explain this. Good to see you all, and I did want to just give the council a little bit of kudos. I also have, in addition to Vivian Parsons with me, we just hired another risk control consultant, Rich Simmons here, and his background, he's a retired firefighter from the city of Charleston, and he is no stranger to what you just sat through here with the ambulance fee, and he was astounded at the reception he had. You've got how many counselors in Charleston, do you go in front of them?
Twenty-seven.
They'd have twenty-seven of them, and he said, you know, it's a little bit more difficult to get a couple of things accomplished there, so he was, he was raving about how well-received that last presentation was. I think he picked the wrong place to live for his unemployment. But we're really excited to have him on board, he's going to do a great job of doing some of the training elements, that's where his background is as well, and that's something that we prioritize, similar to what you all were saying, is it's really taking a look at our, our public safety personnel. You probably remember when we had John Bowling out giving training for your sheriff's department, he's a retired officer, we'd really like to find people in those roles. So just wanted to briefly introduce Rich, because you'd probably get to see him around here. But as Alan was saying, we're here just to discuss what that company nurse pilot program would look like. This was just in a direct response to see what we can do to help you all control costs on the workers' compensation side. So at this stage, we're rolling out a pilot program with our six largest counties. We fully anticipate that it'll be a success and that we'll be able to roll it out with the rest of the state, but we got to start somewhere, so we're really pleased to be able to bring that opportunity to you all here. Just as a brief background, as Alan said, we are coming to you from WV Corp, we've been around since two thousand and seven, you've been founding members of the risk pool. We handle your property and casualty, as well as your workers' compensation coverage, and being the, the only self-insurance risk pool in the state, we are owned and governed by our members. Of course, you've got pretty direct representation with Councilman Whitaker here, he sits on our supervisory board, he basically gives us the direction for all the decisions that we're making, voted in by our membership, and of course, you've got very direct access to him, so appreciate him being a part of it. And the program's been pretty successful, as you can see, we're up to fifty of the fifty-five counties, no county that has joined the pool has ever left the pool, and recently, we've been able to expand, so we are continuing to, we, we understand that, you know, growing is a great thing, but of course, it comes with some growing things as well, as you're seeing, you know, really well here in Berkeley County. We've been able to open the doors to municipality members, so we fully anticipate to keep growing, and that's part of why we think we'll be able to roll out this program as well. So my objectives...
Mike, I'd like to add one thing, even though we're not the largest county by land, square miles of land, we have more members than any other county in the state, it looks like.
Oh, yeah, your authority members. Yeah, each star there represents one of the authorities that you have, and actually, we're hoping when we get out of here to introduce Rich to the ambulance authority, so they know that they've got access and another trainer that they can bring in for things. So you've been very instrumental in bringing your county-related authorities on board with the risk pool as well, we really appreciate that. I wanted to keep it pretty simple, all I want to accomplish in this time is just to give you an understanding of what this company nurse program's going to look like and how that will change what's happening currently. So currently, when you have an employee who gets injured, what's happening is they are reporting that to their supervisor, and depending on who they're directed to go through, somebody's sitting down at the computer, they're logging on to our website, wvcorp.org, they're keying in a workers' compensation claim, they click submit, that goes to our claim staff, and we handle from there. This is designed to basically take a little bit of that paperwork off the plate with the supervisor or whoever you have managing the workers' compensation claims reporting, that should get us, get the claim to us a little bit more quickly, and we should see some cost savings there as well, because the company nurse program also triages care. So I, if you have the time for it, I, I don't know if we're running late, but they...
We're short on time, so...
Short on time, okay, so they're, what they do is they typically, there's ten-minute videos that we would share with your supervisors, so, so they're familiar with how the program works, and a six-minute video that we would send out or email to all employees, so they're familiar with it. But I've also just kind of posted a summary of what this is, so we can kind of just walk through it. But it's day of injury nurse triage care is what this essentially third-party company nurse entity would do for us. It's basically just designed to increase that efficiency of the reporting process, and it's billed as an employee benefit. They work with other pools and other states similar to us, they actually work directly with larger companies, we rolled this out as an employee benefit to their staff, because it gives them access to a healthcare professional, a registered nurse who's on call twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. So summing up what we would have seen in the video, essentially how it works is, is you would, you would call into this hotline, and in an emergency situation, of course, it's still an emergency, you're still calling nine-one-one, there's going to be times where somebody's in the emergency care. If that's not the issue, you would call the company nurse hotline, or after calling nine-one-one and giving somebody the emergency attention they would need, you would still call up a company nurse to report that claim. The employee can call themselves or the supervisor if they feel it's easier to keep them responsible for reporting these things, they can call that hotline. At that point, they would talk to an injury care coordinator, who's just going to collect general information, date of birth, name, social, where they're working, name of the supervisor, things of that nature, and then they will push them off to one of these registered nurses who will triage that care, and that's where we see kind of the first benefit coming in. They will be able to direct the injured employee to a healthcare facility, or in some cases, if it's minor, be able to direct them and give them step, step-by-step instructions on self-care, saying, hey, you know, how deep is the cut? Is it still bleeding, has it stopped? You know, go get ice, go rest it, call me in the morning if there's an issue, things of that nature. Or they can say, okay, here is where the facility that you should be heading to. It's designed to eliminate people just immediately going to the emergency room, because they're, that can happen an unnecessary amount of times. And it also takes the burden of making that decision off the supervisor themselves. And it also takes the burden of making that decision off the supervisor themselves because they're talking to a healthcare professional.
Now, Mike, would this, I'll just stop.
Yeah.
Would this just be all audio or would it be also visual and audio both?
No, this would-
Conversation?
This, this conversation would just happen over the phone. It would just be a phone number that they'd be calling in. And the nurse would be, it wouldn't be, it's, it wouldn't be telehealth. It wouldn't be, uh, them sitting down and, and going in for a checkup or anything routine. This would just be post-accident. When you have an injury, call up, hey, I hurt myself, twisted my ankle, threw out my back, got a cut, whatever it happens to be. They'll collect those details and they're the ones who would key in the claim as well. So it would take the paperwork off the plate of your supervisors. Um, so they would direct the care, but they would also enter that claim into the system.
Actually, right now, all of the claims, um, are filed through your office through, through Tracy. We get employee or employers' first report of injury, the employees' first report of injury. We're the one that enters the claim. Uh, we get the claim number. Um, so.
I'm just thinking, I'm thinking a cut could be something that's a, you know, a quarter inch deeper. It could be a cut that's three inches deep.
Right.
So the visual would be?
Could, could be helpful, yeah. They're, they're just taking that information, uh, audibly over the phone.
I'm talking about once the nurse gets gone.
Right. Yeah, the, the nurse is still just taking that call over the phone. And they will ultimately be sending somebody to a medical, uh, care facility. And somebody would, and that's another thing. They, they don't actually, they're not gonna diagnose injuries. Uh, they're not gonna recommend time off. They're not gonna do any of those decisions. They're just taking in that preliminary information, making us, an assessment of, of how severe it is and then pushing them to a medical facility at that point. And at that point, once they've completed that phone call, they will send an alert to that medical facility with the information ahead of time, saying, look for this person. They'll be coming in. Uh, and here's a little bit of background that we collected over the phone. And at the same time, that report that they're sending off to the physician's office, they're also sending to you, whoever you've designated, Tracy typically, uh, to receive that first report of injury, uh, and also to us, to WV Corp. So from our standpoint, the process doesn't change at all. This isn't, uh, we're not, this isn't a third party that's handling claims. We're not outsourcing anything. It's just changing the process by which we receive claims. So from that point, once the company nurse has keyed that in and sent it to us, we handle that just like any other claim. We still have our in-house claim staff, um, that you're used to working with. They handle the claim just like normal. They're gonna send you your claim number. They're gonna send you the follow-up email or send that to Tracy like they typically do. It actually won't change that process at all. It's just that middleman that's taking the burden off of Tracy or your supervisors.
If, if we saw this more as a benefit to our public safety employees that work 24/7, um, if-
Right.
You know, if, you know, I, if a facilities worker gets hurt Monday through Friday, they know as soon as that injury occurs, that work-related injury or, or illness occurs, they come in and they let us know what's going on. We file, we can file the claim pretty quickly. If a public safety employee deputy firefighter gets injured on the weekend, that claim isn't filed at least until early the next work week. Every employee will have a card, um, that's specific to the county. Um, it, it's almost like a health insurance.
Exactly, yep. And we'll take a look.
So that the employee that gets injured after hours can get that, you know, because a lot of times, if they go to the emergency room, they're referred to a specialist. They may have to go to a orthopod or someone like that. They're calling us first thing Monday morning wanting to know what their claim number is. We haven't even, we don't even know about the claim yet. Um, so this, this really will benefit our public safety employees more than your normal.
To services 24/7/365.
Yes, 24/7/365. And that's the whole goal, is just to expedite how quickly that can get to us, um, so we can start managing it from the get-go.
But these also need to be referred to in the urgent care process, so they don't work in emergency, emergency emergency visit too, if we call the cost back?
Right, yes. And that's, that's the, the purpose behind it as well. And, and it, there will be times where they'll get on the phone and say, hey, you need to go to the emergency room. That's just gonna be an option. But having a nurse there to triage that and say, you can go to urgent care, you can go to this facility, you have to go to the emergency room, or, hey, why don't you actually give this some time? That's where you'll see some cost savings as well. So in addition to alerting Tracy and alerting us of that claim, you can also designate individuals to receive regular, weekly, monthly, quarterly reports to see where this claim is happening. Similar to what you can get from us as well, but, um, these would be sent to you, just to give you a little bit more information. That's a capability that they have. Also, as I said before, our adjusters will just be handling the claims just as normal once we get to that point. And you still may, Alan wisely pointed out, anything that's new, there's gonna be some hiccups with it. The intention is they're gonna be sending that first report of injury, that OIC one form, to that, uh, care facility ahead of time. We're still saying, you may want to have a stack of those on hand with supervisors just to pass out if they're gonna be sending somebody to the clinic just to expedite, uh, because they still will have to fill out, have the doctor fill out that first report of injury. We'll still, still need that. That's something that, that, um, again, they should be able to send that, but we're saying just in case. And just to give you a background of how that works currently, currently, when your supervisor or Tracy keys a, a claim into the system and clicks submit, this form pops up and then we ask you to print it out and send it. So it's no change in sending this form with somebody. We just say it as, as a safety net or a backup, still probably a good idea early on to be sending this form with that injured employee if possible, just in case we're still working out the kinks on it. Uh, so next steps at this point, if, if that gives you just kind of a broad understanding of the program, what we'd ask you to do is, is you order posters and stickers and cards. You can hang out posters that have the hotline. There's little stickers that people like. You can just kind of put it on the back of a cell phone or an employee badge or on your wallet. There's also wallet cards, just like an insurance card, like Alan was saying, that would have, here's the number to call. Hey, if you get hurt, call this number. Uh, and it also has their member ID number on it, just like an insurance card. So when it, the call comes into the hotline, they say, okay, where are you calling from? What's your member ID? They'd have that information just on hand. So all employees will be able to do it pretty easily.
So no cost to us?
There's no cost to you, right.
And how does this program start? Just say, go and go?
That's pretty much it. We've actually collected all the information. They have the information. Company nurse has you in their system. So if you wanted to call up that number now, they would be prepared and ready for you. It's just all based on when you rolled out and we're looking at that July 1 date. Uh, because the claims are still coming to us, if this doesn't work perfectly in the rollout and people forget to call company nurse, they decide, I'm gonna fill out a claim online, you're no worse off than before. That, that's still coming directly to us. This is basically just designed to make it, um, a quicker, easier process for everybody involved. So, uh, there's really no, there's really no downside. There's no gain. You can't get it wrong if you're not calling in. But that's how that would work. And then we would also say at the rollout time, we'll, we'll email a link. And it's just a quick six-minute YouTube video that basically talks through what I just said with a little less detail, just reminding employees, hey, if you get hurt, call this number, uh, and here's what you can expect. Here's the information you can expect to give them. Here's the information you can expect to receive. So, um, it's gonna eliminate most of the paperwork. That's one of the big benefits, as we said before. It's negating the necessity of, of supervisors from having to kind of make a determination on how serious this injury is. They can also present a panel of physicians. Um, they can't force an employee to go to a certain place over another. If they say, well, I'm going to this doctor, uh, but they can say, here's where we're suggesting that you go. Uh, and for most employees, that will be the determining factor. Uh, and you may find just here throughout the county that you've, you've got certain places that you prefer over others. We've had this conversation in other counties as well, where they're saying, we absolutely don't want anybody going to this doctor. Don't put them on the, on your list. This guy just likes to write, you know, whatever and give him time off, whatever it happens to be. That's part of this. They can set up a panel of physicians that you like and direct them to those places as well. And they're also finding this, and again, this is coming from their marketing information, but it's improving clinical outcomes because they're able to get them to the correct place, uh, sooner. Definitely reduces medical costs. And there is no cost to you. Obviously, this is a program that we as the pool are paying for. But we are doing it because we are anticipating, uh, some cost savings from all the analysis that we've done and the way we've seen this work other places. There is a cost benefit.
Any limitations across the state border?
No, they're, they're a national, they're a national organization, so they actually, I mean, they're looking at, gosh, they're looking at every state in the country and they're looking at facilities.
And if you look at their current client list, Walmart, Sands Club, CBS, Walgreens, Save a Light Bird Street Store. You know, we, I've done some, some research on, on this company. You know, it can't, like I said, there will, there'll be some hiccups along the way, but I, I don't see where it could hurt us. It can, it can only help us on the workers' compensation claim size, I'm hoping.
Right. And to give you a little bit of background, while we wrap up here, of some of the conversations that, um, that Alan has had with us, there's really two things that come into play when we look at this as a business decision from the pool's standpoint. And the things that really drive costs on the workers' compensation side that we feel like we can exert a little bit of control over or you as members can, is in getting claims to us more quickly. There's just a strong correlation between claim being allowed to languish and the cost just rising up with that. So we see an increase in costs. The longer it takes for a claim to get through the doors to us, this should eliminate that that's getting to us immediately. And the other side of it, you know, there's a lot of hidden costs to injuries. We're seeing especially now, staff shortages are tough. So the quicker you can get people back into work or, or avoid some of these things from languishing is better. But is that three-year experience modifier that Alan had talked about? So I, I briefly want just to give you some background information of how that works, so you understand the conversations that Alan's having with us, um, on this front. But there's, there's only a couple of key components that go into determining what you pay for workers' compensation. It's a pretty straightforward formula. We take payroll, uh, and workers' compensation, of course, is a statutory program. So we didn't come up with this. Every workers' compensation provider in the state has to use this exact same formula. Uh, we, you take payroll, you multiply it by the classification code or classification rate of the employee that you have. So for example, you just had your EMS staff in here, their rate is much higher than you have somebody sitting in the clerk's office. Uh, again, we don't come up with those rates. That's determined actually at the national level. The National Council of Compensation Insurance comes up with those rates. Each state has to approve them. Uh, and then they give those to us as a provider. Uh, we put our own rate on there. And from our standpoint, and you've got a, a board member here who could attest to it, we've actually reduced our workers' compensation rate to pool charges since the inception of the pool. So we, we've kept that very stable. Um, but then that last kind of wild card factor is your experience mod. And that all is multiplied together to determine what your coverage costs. And your experience mod is just a numeric representation of your claims history. So it takes a look at, basically, the NCCI sets what they would expect an organization similar to you to have as a claim experience. And they set that at a 1.00. Anything by, multiplied by one is gonna stay the same. So if you're beating the industry average by about 20%, your mod's gonna look like a, a .8. And when they multiply that through, you're gonna see some cost savings. Now, the reverse is true. If, if you're lagging behind where the NCCI would expect you to be, you're gonna have a higher experience modifier and it's gonna basically look like an up charge when you're looking at your workers' compensation. Just to show you in table of what that would look like, you know, I just pulled some random codes just for fun here. But you can see, uh, payroll, we're gonna keep that the same at 100,000. If you've got some clerical workers versus roofers, you can see that rate, uh, is gonna look very different because of the hazardous nature of the roofing job. Uh, but that one factor you can alter, that experience rating, shows you what a difference it makes if you're a .7 versus a 1 versus a, a 1.5 in what that cost of coverage would be. Uh, and just to give you a, a, a direct example of what this would look like as a member, your experience mod is calculated based on the three previous pool years of claims history that you have with us. So in this particular scenario, um, they're, they're losing to the average, right? They're, they're 1.26 largely due to that pretty bad year. They had a 371% loss ratio in that 1718 fiscal year. And you can see, that falls off. We take on a much better year, that 42%. Well, that drops that, that experience mod to a .87. That's, if everything else was equal, if your payroll didn't change, you didn't have any new staff, and our rates, which we hold stable, didn't change, you could expect a, a 31% decrease in what you're paying for workers' compensation based solely on how that experience modifier works. Because with, uh, with loss ratios of 5, 3, and 42, well, you're, you're doing way better than the average bear. So that in a nutshell is how the experience modifier can affect your workers' compensation premium. The, the other side of that, that we, uh, when we're talking about this topic, that I also wanted to throw in, just so you have an understanding of how it works, is getting an employee back to work quickly. Um, there's a couple of components with workers' compensation. We pay those direct medical costs for the medical care that they're receiving. But there also can be the wage component, the indemnification or the lost wages if they're off work for a period of time. If you can eliminate any lost time, the way that the workers' compensation system is set up is it really wants to incentivize getting people back to work. So it'll actually take a look at your medical claims as if they were 70% lower. So in this particular example, imagine you've got an employee that hurts themselves, they rack up $10,000 in medical bills and they, they miss some time. Well, in addition to that lost time hitting this formula, it's also gonna treat those $10,000 of medical bills as $10,000 when it's calculated into determining your experience mod. If you have that same person with that same inju- injury, $10,000 in medical bills, and they don't miss any time, believe it or not, when it's applied into your experience mod, it actually looks at those costs as if they were only $3,000 in medical bills. So there's a strong incentive in bringing people back. So it's kind of that, uh, one-two punch. And company nurse, of course, doesn't do anything on the return to work side. I'm just throwing this in so you've got a more holistic picture of what's affecting the workers' comp, um, experience modifier. But that's another place where we see a lot of savings. Of course, we can help, uh, come in and, and do some things on that front as well. So I did want to give just a quick plug, because, you know, we got Rich with me here on the risk control side of things, and we'll, and we'll wrap it up.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, but we're, we're still here. There's no cost for anything that we can do if you ever want us out for training or to help set up a program like this. Uh, so that, in a nutshell, is how that works. Really appreciate your time. Thank you for setting this up, Alan Penny as well, and, uh, happy to answer questions if you have any. Otherwise, we'll let you get back on schedule.
Yeah.
I can bring him with me next month.
Yeah.
Thanks, appreciate that.
I just, I guess what I'm asking for from the council, and we're gonna talk about a renewal real quick, is consensus from the council to, to roll this program out and give it a try. And then we'll report back to you regularly on how, how it's going.
Okay, sure. Yeah.
For the first year.
Just to be fair to you, Mike and Vivian and, and Rich, Mitch.
Rich.
Alan and I have a 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock, and 3 o'clock. So, and we still have to get through today.
Totally understood, yeah, yeah, yeah. Say no more. Really great seeing you. We'll let you get back to it, but appreciate it. Thank you again.
All right, thank you.
Don't go anywhere, just chat. We'll, we'll be, we'll hang out for a little bit. So it's a consensus of the council for us to try this program?
Yeah.
Okay. So over the next six weeks, we'll, we'll start rolling it out.
Okay, all right. Okay, so Alan, your first agenda item is?
Yes, sir. Real quick, while, while Vivian and Rich and Mike is here, we receive this, as council's aware, it's actually since October of last year. We've been working on our, on our renewal of property casualty insurance, and I've provided it to you in your packet, as well as a 10-year analysis of our premium history. Um, just some key points, despite an increase in our payroll and, and the council has been very generous to our employees over the past couple of years. Our workers' compensation premium renewal actually decreased by $28,492 or about 5.91%. Um, this decrease, to go back to what Mike has, or Mike has said, is, is due to more favorable workers' compensation loss experience. We're finally starting to, um, get, uh, participation from the sheriff's department.
What, what is that rate? The 5%, whatever, how much did that save us?
Well, our, our workers' comp, it's, uh, $28,492. Our rate modification factor, at, at one time, we were actually under 1. We've had some, some bad claims years. We're starting to lose some of those claims years. Our workers' compensation, uh, our experience modification factor went from 1.59 to 1.43. It's still high.
Yeah.
But just to let you know, that .6 change, uh, as a re, as, as a percentage of, of our actual workers' compensation costs, actually saved us $48,365. So that .16 decrease in rate modification factor saved us almost $49,000 workers' compensation premium. So why, that's why this, programs like this are important. Um, the sheriff has been, the new sheriff has been working with us to get deputies. And, and the majority of our workers' compensation claims, as you can imagine, come from public safety, but really law enforcement. Previous sheriffs would not recognize light duty. This sheriff is saying, absolutely, if I can use them, clerk, you know, for clerical duties, administrative duties- use them for clerical duties, administrative duties, to serve, you know, summons, I'll put them to work. So I think you're going to see a positive trend in our workers' compensation premiums. You know, this new program coupled with, you know, cooperation from the sheriff, our workers' compensation premium as a percentage of the total, as I mentioned, is 40 to 45%. You know, our liability, our fleet, our buildings, that makes up the other, you know, 55 to 60%.
And our total bill's like, what, 3 million? Our total bill to the risk pool?
A million, slightly over a million.
All right. I'm sorry.
So that's workers' comp. The premium for property casualty and boiler machinery both increased, but we've added, we've increased the value of 520 South Raleigh Street. We've also added 424, 20 and 1/2 South Raleigh Street. And we also, for the, for a short term, we added 8247 Winchester Avenue, which is the duplex that we purchased adjacent to the 22 April Park that we're putting in down in Inwood. Fleet increased slightly by 8.73%. Overall, the renewals coming in at $1,053,818, which is actually a slight decrease in our premium. So it's well within budget. We budgeted $1,003,000 next year. This is under budget. But that $1,003,000 also pays for, we have a small accident health policy for community service and deputy reserves. And then we use the rest of that to pay for deductibles. So the risk pool has given us good service over the years. You know, they've been very attentive to us. You know, from a claims perspective, they pay our claims promptly. If we have a claim that's a little bit questionable, we can pick up the phone and call them. And they work with us on maybe really scrutinizing a claim, particularly this workers' compensation claim, that, you know, instinctively, we feel that it needs to be, you know, to really be looked at. So they give us a level of service that we haven't gotten before, either through Burke Street or through some of the other programs that we've involved in. So I'm recommending to the council that we renew our property casualty policy with the risk pool for fiscal year 2223 at the quoted premium of $1,053,818.
All right. Entertained a motion to enter into 2223 insurance with West Virginia Court?
To move.
Second. Got a motion on the floor. A second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. All right. Vivian, it's always good to see you before you get out of here. So next, we have continued discussion, Mr. Davis for Capital Projects.
Yes, sir. If we could jump just ahead real quick while Gary, Gary's still here. Last week, the sheriff came before you with a list of five automatic rifles and suppressors that you wish, we've had them in our inventory for about 15 years and never been used. Attached in your packet is the official declaration of surplus property that I'm asking the council to approve. And then Gary and I will be working on this, with the sheriff, on disposal of these, of these.
Yeah.
This property.
And the reason, one reason is because they're fully alternating.
Correct.
We can use your own object site. They can only get a license.
Right.
At least it would give it a national.
Yeah. And the sheriff and I talked about that briefly. So, all right. So entertain a motion for the surplus property that is in the sheriff's department.
Second.
Motion's been made. Second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Now go back to the capital projects.
The final matter for your consideration is, two weeks ago, I came to you with a list of capital and land development projects. At that time, you asked me not to only give you the estimated cost of the project, but how I see the projects being funded, either through the general fund, through coal severance, I've added the Health Department, West Virginia Development Block Grants, the American Rescue Act, and the total commitment. As you can see, working left to right, you know, I'll start with 750 Baltimore Street. You did award that project last week at a cost of $1,060,000. As I mentioned today, when we went through your purchase order log, we have encumbered that money out of the general fund capital account. 126 West King Street, we'll be demolishing that building as well as removing the asbestos and doing some site work, cost of $90,881. I've encumbered that money in coal severance out of the current year's budget. 110 West King Street, 3,500,000 is the estimated cost of turning that building into what I call the Berkeley County Heritage Museum. We're currently working with the West Virginia Department of History and Culture. And I think it was indicated this morning that at least initially, they'll be giving us some assistance to the tune of about $70,000. 122 Waverly Court, which is the addition to the Berkeley County Health Department.
Let's stop as we go. 110 West King Street being museum, some of that would probably qualify for under the American Rescue Plan, meaning the new HVAC system for the building to circulate fresh air because there'll be a huge volume of people in there, right?
That's why I have our grants votes here.
And then 122 Waverly Court, you get there, you're, am I getting ahead of you now?
No, there's, that's, that was next up, and you had me stopped. We had the prepaid conferences past Monday. We had six contractors show up on site. Preliminary, the cost for that addition is $3 million. The Health Department has contributed $750,000. The West Virginia Development Block Grant provides funding to the tune of $608,802. And it's my understanding, and the council can correct me if I'm wrong, that you've committed of the first half of the distribution of the American Rescue Act fund, the total available is $23,137,570. We've received half of that. And should get the second half, Tracy, in June. You indicated that, and it's eligible for funding through the American Rescue Act, that you wanted me to fund the balance of that project through the American Rescue Act to the tune of $1,641,198.
I would agree with that.
So that, that has been funded.
All right. So that means that will become yellow in the 1.6 billion portion of.
Well, the white indicates that it's, the funding has been allocated.
Okay.
The color coding is white. The project has been approved and funding allocated. The yellow, the project has been discussed, and it is available through the American Rescue Act. And red is, I don't know what to do with it.
Okay.
The next is 400 West Stevens Street. That is the redevelopment and refurbishment of this building. The construction documents are being prepared. Hopefully, they will be ready to be distributed. The council has already approved this project. Estimated cost is $7,305,286. And again, this project is available through, we can use American Rescue Act funding for this program. So based on previous discussions with the council, I have indicated that that project will be funded through the American Rescue Act.
And the reason why that is because the traffic flow, we're trying to create that traffic flow that will keep people here less. And is that right?
Okay. So if it's okay with the council, we will fund that program through American Rescue.
Yep.
So that now commits about $9 million. Actually, $8,946,494. The next project is 520 South Raleigh Street, which is the addition to the day report center. We did have the initial planning meeting on that on April 21st, 2022. We will have engineers on site Monday. They will be looking at the utilities. We had missed utility come out. Actually, Crabtree had missed utility come out, and they marked the lines this week. So they will be looking at the site, trying to determine what needs to be moved and what obstacles we may have with the addition to that. I don't know. We haven't gotten any of the estimates on that. I plugged in $3.5 million based primarily on, you know, I'm assuming that the addition will be similar to what we're going to be putting on the Health Department. I added the additional $500,000 in there only because of the site work that may have to be done.
I was thinking that the addition to 520 was going to be bigger than the Health Department, like almost twice the size.
It could be. I don't, I don't know.
Yeah. I was thinking so. I was thinking that would be more like a $7 million project.
I mean, I can bump that to 7 million.
I'm thinking so, Alan.
Okay. That is eligible for American Rescue Act funding, correct?
Okay.
The next is, and I have Gary here, and I broke it out, by lighting and replacement of HVAC systems. 380 West South Street, which is the Judicial Center, and 510 South Raleigh Street, which is the Sheriff's Department, the upgrade to the LED lighting. We have given some preliminary prices for labor and parts to the tune of about $3 million. However, we have been told that those prices, like everything else, could go up significantly in the future by the tune of what, 33%?
June 1st, 30%.
Okay. So that $3 million estimate will run out the end of this month.
So.
So it could be four million.
So with that said, are they, how's this going to be, how's this going to be?
Here?
Yeah. Well, is this one source?
This one source on a national contract. Anthony and Jeff have both looked at the contract. It qualifies.
So do we have a solid number yet?
We do.
In design?
We do.
So basically, if this was put in action before June 1st, it would save us 30 something percent?
That's correct. Save us a million bucks. The, we backed out that number, the $3 million number, included the done building. But since it's on your plate to construct, pulling it out is 2.6, 2.59 and change.
Right.
So it's 2.6 for complete renovation and lighting at 380, 520, and retrofit some of the stuff at 802. LED with controls. So insanely impressive savings.
What's the ready return on it?
Seven years.
Seven years.
If you spend the same.
Okay.
But that is not eligible for American Rescue Act.
Correct. So we need to get that on an agenda then?
Yep.
For approval.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
And then we have to figure out what.
No, we just got to vote on it. You got to figure it out.
Thirty percent increase.
Yeah. I mean.
I understand.
I'm just torment. All right.
Okay.
Yeah.
380 West South Street, 510 South Raleigh Street, HVAC. Tracy, that is eligible for American Rescue Act funding. Cost, 7 million?
Seven.
But.
But a piece of that project to the tune of 520,000 stands to get an 18% increase next Thursday. So if you're committed to that project and the upgrades with the return on investment of about 10 years, you have to make a decision on some pieces. And the reason for that increase is change in product line and retooling assembly. It's an eight months from order to delivery, no matter what. But $520,000 of that number is going up 18% next Thursday.
But we don't have to have that money.
We do not. I just need to have a commitment for order, preferably right now. We're not going to make it next Thursday.
501?
It's $80,000.
Yeah, $80,000 increase.
Yeah. It's an $80,000 increase that we can't control. Again, on the, it's already initiated. It's, it's the product that we use. It's what we do. The other is coming faster, but this is an immediate change. We don't commit it to any ring out of pocket.
All right. All right, Mr. Davis.
And that's American Rescue Act eligible.
Okay. So since we're running so far behind and stuff, is it okay, is it possible for us to stop at this point?
Up or down.
And, and pick up on the renovations of Crawford Building and do this portion maybe next week?
Yes.
But I guess what we should do, so we could save a million, approximately a million and $80,000 if we pulled the trigger. And on these items right now, and we have the recommendation, no money that we have to have right now. Anything that we would be?
We can revisit the lighting next week.
Revisit lighting next week. But if you're committed, if you're committed to the upgrades of the judicial, of doing the HVAC.
Today.
Give direction today on the $520,000 pieces of that that's going to be modified. I really need to interact with them.
Well, if we're going to give correction, why not give it on the whole?
On the whole project?
Yeah, the whole project.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I'm okay with that.
All right. I'll entertain a motion on the, the lighting of 380, lighting and HVAC on 380 West South Street and 510 South Raleigh Street, in addition to some other locations, like some in 802, right?
And animal.
And animal control. And right now, that asking is $10 million and seven, could be less, it's going to be less than.
Not too expensive.
Right. And 7 million of that would be used out of the American Rescue. Not to exceed 10 million. Right. And motion on the floor. We have a second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. All right. So.
We need to designate the 3 million.
Yeah, we'll do that next week. All right. Just so everybody knows, the Judicial Center is now somewhat around 18 years old. So the HVAC system is probably running on its last leg.
R22.
It's very inefficient. And this is why we're doing things. We're spending money today to save the future council people money.
And it's, it's an end of life. And next year, the maintenance contract on that, if we even get it.
If, if.
We can get a full service length.
Probably.
Yeah.
You look at your numbers, and you talk about prediction and return on investment. It's not today's numbers. That stuff is integrated and retired, end of life, end of service, end of life. So the chances of us maintaining full service is probably slim to none. And we saw what break fix does to our pocketbook, this building.
Outback.
It's almost insane in the world.
All right. All right. So let's pick back up next week on where we left off. All right. Everybody okay with that?
Sounds good.
All right. We need, that's all you need. All right, we need, that's all you need right now today. We need a motion to go to executive session for legal matters.
So move.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second? Second, any discussion? All right, we are in executive session. You want to cut us off real quick? And Penny, you want to take that photo real quick, Matt?
Yes.
Can I do that? Just right.
Hold on.
You don't have to go anywhere, just right here by the desk.
We're getting ready for the photo.
Doug's going to wear the tricorn. You're going to wear the tricorn.
Oh, yeah.
Just kidding.
Okay.
I'm just kidding.
You want to wear that?
Okay. We got, we got Mr. Davis.
I just have your outfit.
It's a great photo.
Lose that, lose that photo.
Lose that photo?
Put him in the middle. Put him right here in the middle.
Yeah, we need the tricorn, somebody in the middle. They can't have a gap like that.
I feel like, why didn't Luke do?
Oh, jeez. Okay. That chair is in the way on the left. Dan?